Or follow up or schedule the matter on a subsequent board agenda.
Good morning, Kay.
Good morning, Kay Graves from Lewiston. A couple of things. One, I just want to vent a little bit about our special districts. And it would be great if the people that we think we're electing to run them would stop treating them as their little victims. That's not for you guys, that's just for general. Also, I'd really like to know to the point of insisting what the board filed for the water lawsuit against the state. We have a right to know and a need to know, and I haven't seen it published anywhere. So that would be great if we could see that.
Good, there was number three.
Also, just slipped my mind, so there they'll have to do.
We will have an update during the department head reports on that, Kay.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else?
Good morning, my name is Dan Devudie and I'm from Hayfork. Here to talk about a few things as well. I believe that the county should include license stacking with a conditional use permit on a site-specific basis. In all the planning commission meetings that I went to to discuss license stacking, they talked about including a conditional use permit which covers a site-specific EIR that once approved by the planning commission would eventually be an individual CEQA, which would be more intensive than the general CEQA the county is preparing for the licensing program. So I think that making applicants that are out there that have already gone through an extensive and expensive process to get an individual environmental impact report done such as myself to the $200,000 to $30,000 should be allowed to go through the process of applying for these conditional use permits on that site in specific cases. Currently, there's no license stacking under any cultivation in any of our cultivation ordinances. However, Old Mill Farms, Somchai Hoffman, who was granted a type III outdoor license through his conditional use permit, which just for a point of clarity is defined as 10,001 square feet to one acre of outdoor canopy, has been jurisdictionally approved for five small mixed light tier one licenses, numbered TAL 188584, 8745, 8642, 8586, 8295, exceeding that type III licensed square footage of one acre. I brought this to Leslie Hubbard, Rick Tippett, and Jeff Dickie's attendant. And Leslie informed me that she actually did approve the jurisdictional clearance from CD, request from CFA when Mr. Hoffman requested those five small mixed light cultivation licenses when he applied for his state licenses instead of that type III outdoor license which covers up to one square foot of canopy. So my questions are how can the head of the planning department or interim head of the planning department have the authority to approve stack licenses on an individual basis? And then how can they be allowed to also approve a license structure that isn't covered by any section of county ordinances and in fact explicitly in the county ordinance, it's set to have one cultivation license type per APN number. The economic benefit provided to Mr. Hoffman by being able to stack licenses has led him to list his property with Trinity Outdoor Properties at $7 million. This drastically-
Okay, sorry, time is up. But we'll have more discussion on items that could be related to that. Anyone else for public comment?
Morning, Madam Chair, I'm Tom Balaico of the city. I stand before you as student of history, military history. Can't help it from where I went to school, but I actually do enjoy it. I was thinking the other day about, I read somewhere this list, a new list of the ten most significant battles in war. Seen these lists for thirty years, at least, I've paid attention to them. They're always interesting, there's some, you know, depending on whose slant is writing, you see more. You know, the Battle Hastings is almost always on there, you see Giddiesburg a lot, Stalingrad. But they all always start with Dona Mountain, which was a battle that, until that day, occurred between Alexander III, Massedon, and first known as Darius, king of the world. This was Greece against the Persian Empire that, up until that time, ruled the known world. The Greeks were outnumbered no less than 31. Alexander's generals urged him to make peace. And instead, he said, "Are you kidding me? There is our enemy right there." And the battle was so dependent on Alexander's precise personal leadership and risk, ran the risk of destroying his whole army so that he could get through and personally threaten the king, Darius, who took off for his life leaving his army on the field. Had Alexander over calculated, Western society or civilizations we know it would not have formed. So I want to say that going into Friday's contest, I do go with Alexander-level competence in our outcome. However, the greatest generals in history have made mistakes. Robert E. Lee, Douglas MacArthur, they have overestimated. So it certainly does not escape my belief that a hobbyist lawyer can make a mistake too. In which case, more than 200 families in Trinity County will die without a way to make a living in 2019, unless this board acts fast. So rather than wait two weeks, I hope, this doesn't happen, but I'd like you, Madam Chair, you prepare to agendize the repeal of all Trinity County's cannabis ordinances, including the state ordinance, excuse me, including the personal growth and put us entirely under state law in the event that our program is suspended. Thank you.
Naomi Devudie in Hayfork. I believe the county should include stacking licenses for applicants with conditional use permits that include site-specific environmental impact reports and CEQA. Currently, the county doesn't allow license stacking. However, it is public knowledge that Old Mill Farms, Somchai Hoffman, was granted five small mixed light licenses. Hoffman had been approved for a type III outdoor license through his conditional use permit. Five small mixed licenses when grown year-round have the equivalent of 250,000 square feet of production. That is 25 times more than any other current license holder. A tier III outdoor allows for up to 43,000 square foot of canopy to be harvested once a year in an outdoor garden or greenhouses with no artificial or light manipulation. It is an unfair economic advantage for one property to be able to stack licenses. Now Mr. Hoffman has his property listed for $7 million. All other cannabis properties are devalued because of only being able to hold one license. It is up to the Board of Supervisors, Planning Commission, Planning Department staff to have congruency between licenses that are approved and the existing language of county ordinance. With all of this info, I hope the Board of Supervisors, Planning Commission, and Planning Department will take the necessary action to bring all license holders into compliance with county ordinances and individual conditional use permits. Thanks.
Anyone else? All right.
Everett Harvey, Weaverville. Couple of words, grading ordinance. I hope that doesn't fall through the cracks again like it has for decades. I'm even willing to put myself out and be willing to draft an ordinance for you. If you don't have enough time, then you can chop it all apart if you want. So anyway, grading ordinance. Thank you for the donut, so I have no idea who brought it. Thank you.
Good morning, Chairman and Board of Devalvies. I just have a voice on item 3.1 to speak for several residences in the east in order to expedite the time saying the same thing over and again. And so I would like permission to speak, I have in large print for me, because I forgot my glasses. It should only take eight to nine minutes. And that would eliminate 20 minutes or better, if that is okay.
So we'll address that when the item comes to court.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right. Moving on to our morning presentation, item 1.1 from Trinity County Transportation Commission. Receive a presentation from Caltrans project manager Clint Birkenpass on the State Transportation Improvement Program, otherwise known as STIP, SB 45 update for Trinity County. No physical impact. I see your Director of Transportation, Clint Tippett, is here as well.
Morning. Annually, Caltrans is required to come by and give us a briefing of projects that we have adopted through our R-TIP program, which is what funds the STIP, which is the State Transportation Improvement Program. And in that program, we select some projects that are built on state highway system. And what they're required to do is they're required to come in and report and let us know where they're at with those projects and some of the other things that have gone on. So with that, I'll turn it over to our district engineer, Kirk Parkin. Clint Parkin, Pats.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you, commissioners, for having me today. Okay, and I just finished, I'm Clint Birkenpass with Caltrans District 2 out of the Writing Office. And I'm the project manager for projects that we have in Trinity County. Want to talk first about Tom Bell Road. You can see it up there on the screen very briefly, I'll describe it to you. But this is just, as you're heading out of town, Highway 3 to put a left turn lane onto Tom Bell Road. This will service the new jail facility that's going in there. It does tie in, we can switch over to the next slide. It does tie into the Lance Gulch left turn lane. And it kind of extends that out with a two-way left turn lane. And finally ends with just a left as you're heading out of town onto Tom Bell Road. So the intent is just to handle that new left turning traffic that's going to be generated there on the facility and make that a safe maneuver. Fairly short project, fairly small project, but we'll just switch over to the funding sheet and summary. It's roughly all said and done, everything together is about a $2.19 project, including support and everything to get it done through the partnership with the STIP funds here out of the county. The county's funding about a third of that, $700,000. The Caltrans is funding the remaining $1.4 million. It's currently on schedule, moving forward, we're hoping to have this go to construction, not this summer, but next summer, there will be a construction. Be completed fairly quickly, and then we'll have a new left turn facility there. That's pretty much it, any questions on that?
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, please, thank you. Okay. Let's move on to another project then that we're partnering with the county on. There's a requirement on this one for a quarterly report, but I thought it was appropriate since we are cooperating on this one as well. This is on Highway 299, as we headed from west to east, to put a left turn lane in the Denny Road. This will serve the community of Denny and provide a left turn lane there. We can go ahead and skip to the next slide. This is a real informative, I was just kind of showing a general picture of what we've got going on here. It will be a left turn in the eastbound direction only on the Denny Road to service that. It does involve cutting that hillside back to the south side of the road and also probably relocation of a power pole in there. A little bit more work to do to get through the environmental process and get the design done and get through our geotechnical process as well as far as cutting into that hillside. So this one is on a little bit later of its schedule. Turning to the next slide. It's going to end up costing a little bit more. You can see the total cost is about $2.2 million, give or take there. And we're hoping to have this one up to construction the following year. This will be in the summer of 2021, this will go to construction. Again, Trinity County is cooperating about a third with this project as well through the use of some, if I'm reading correctly, among local SB 1 funds that came local. And then Caltrans will be paying the other two-thirds of that. So this will be a nice improvement, a little bit better access to Denny Road. It's a great project and appreciate the opportunity to partner on this one as well. Any questions on that? Yes?
Thank you. How long do you think from once you start the project in Denny to the completion?
So that's a good question. I think our current estimate, I want to say is 75 working days. It's a little bit more extensive, we do have to cut that hillside back. There is a relocation of a power pole as well that will have to take place before we go to construction. Certainly, the project of Tom Bell will proceed quite a bit quicker. That one, you'll probably see it out there for a couple of months. This one might be three, might take the summer to take it at that.
I don't think that people down river have had a summer yet where they haven't had interruptions. I was just curious to see how long. Thank you.
But we're thankful for the improvement.
Yes, I think it's going to be a great improvement when that's done. That'll probably make that turn quite a bit easier on the Denny. Any other questions in general? Well, that's all I have.
I just wanted to point out to you and thank you. On Highway 3 North, probably the best improvement that I've seen in many, many years is the turnouts. And it's a rare time that I drive that road and I drive that, or that, when I drive that road, that I don't see somebody using a turnout. And I drive that road an awful lot. So that has been a huge improvement to travel through there. I want to thank you guys for doing that.
Great, thank you, that's good to hear. You know, that was originally a STIP project as well. And then when the, when we had the budget cuts and things that happened a few years ago, that money was, went away. I think Caltrans was able to pick that up in one of our programs and get that done. So that was a great project that the county had planned. We were able to finish up and bring those improvements, so thank you. Glad to hear the big news.
And Clint, if you could take the message back to your office in Redding. Thanks to Caltrans again for trying to open up 299 during the fires. I know you work with our director. And it was a bit of a push with a variety of agencies, but it was very important to open that up as soon as possible. So thank you.
Thank you, I'll definitely take that back. That was, our goal was as soon as the emergency responders said it was safe to open, you know, we could open fire activities. We wanted to be ready to open and we were able to meet that. Of course, a lot of wind wave traffic control and things like that, but at least to get through. So we do recognize the importance of keeping that open for Trinity County.
So thank you. Any other questions, please? No, okay, thank you. Thanks again, Clint, good to see you. All right, moving on to the consent agenda calendar. The items include routine, non-controversial matters and will be acted upon by the board by one rule, call, motion. A member of the board, staff, or public may request an item to be pulled and considered separately. Board members. Members of the public, you know, wish to throw an item on consent. No?
Everett Harvey, Weaverville again, just because there's a big chunk of change, 2.6.
All right, with that, I would entertain a motion for the remainder of the-
Submit.
Second.
Supervisor Chadwick.
Aye.
Aye.
Supervisor Brown.
Aye.
Supervisor Bentley.
Yes.
Yes. All right, item 2.6. Approve a budget adjustment for fiscal year 2018-19 in the supplement for the County Assessor's Department. $8197 increasing revenue with fixed assets by $750,000. No impact to the general fund. Current cash balance in supplement for County Assessor Fund, $197, is $750,000. Good morning, Madam Chair, board members. This money is, this is the money that we received, state money, grant money that I applied for, that back in August, the board agreed to match that money, it's a three-to-one match, I'm sorry, two-to-one match. And so we've already received this $750,000. This is now just creating a budget for this fund department so that we can now expend and pay the vendor for the property tax management system. Everett, any other questions? Thank you. Board members, any other questions here? Okay.
So moved.
Second, 2.6 as presented.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Good.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to reports and announcements. Department head reports.
You want it?
I do.
Leslie just had it out.
All right, I've got Caltrans.
Oh, I'm sorry, I just had a quick question under word of the department head reports.
Oh, okay.
I don't know if you have anything to add, but we did get asked about the grading orders. I know you've had it scheduled for last week.
Yes.
And due to weather, we got rescheduled, so what is the new date?
I, we were canvassing up the planning commissioners to see what date they had scheduled online or whether it was going to be before our regular scheduled meeting, which is the second Thursday of the month. Our hope was that we would try to have one next week, you know? And she's shaking her head yes, so we are having one next week?
No, not next week.
Oh, not next week, it'll be regular scheduled planning commission meeting. We'll alert the item and shortly thereafter bring it back to the board for action.
Okay, so it's going to be in March then, it sounds like? Okay, just wanted to clarify that.
And as a lead-in, one of the things I did want to report out was we had the storm last week and it was pretty substantial for a road system all through county. As a matter of fact, Denny Road, we took us two days to get all the roads cleaned up because of over 100 trees that were down and a foot and a half. And then, right after, we had the second part of the storm, which was the one that hit on the 12th. And we were able to get in and get all the roads reopened within two days. So the increase in staffing through the new gas tax that came in last November has really helped us start to increase our staffing and be able to get things a lot faster. Done one pretty good.
Great, thank you. Comments, board members, now? Any other department heads besides we move on to county council?
All right, so there's been some questions about the complaint from the state of California that was posted in all of the newspapers in all of the counties in California. That has been assessed by county council. And we're here to report today that that's related to existing contracts that were in place. And the lawsuit is essentially intended to extend those contracts. Trinity County is not subject to any of those contracts. And at this point, we're being advised that we would not need to respond to the complaint that's been filed in the newspaper. And at this point, we have no, no involvement in this litigation as it's proposed.
So to be clear, the Trinity County, no water in Trinity County is under a state water contract.
Trinity County currently is not involved in any contracts with the state as it's related to water and more specifically, the contracts that are involved in this lawsuit.
All right, thank you for the update and clarification. I know we've been receiving some comments on that. Did you have a question?
No, that covered it. I really appreciate you taking the time to address the public.
Okay, sorry.
I think people are, may want to note too, is that it's still federal, there's still a federal contract, correct? But it's not a state contract, but it's a-
I didn't look into what contracts the county is involved in. The only thing I looked into is what this lawsuit's related to and whether we would be encompassed in what the complaint contained.
Yeah.
And the determination of council is that we won't be involved in this lawsuit.
All right, C.A.O.
Just one thing to report, reporting back at the last meeting, Supervisor Bentley asked me to look into a team-building type of project that would encompass the board and all sorts of leadership team. Reached out to a few organizations and was offered through Ultimase group, which is run by William-
Chait.
Chait. Bill Chait, who is very familiar with our C.R.C. And a little bit better news is Trendell would be willing to pay for it, so it wouldn't cost the county anything. So it's something the board would like to participate in or do. I can pursue it farther and maybe pick some dates or something like that. So it's the board's pleasure.
Thank you for the update. All right, board member.
Madam Chair, is that something we have to agendize to discuss, or can we give direction to him?
Well, I would like to have a little bit more information, so it would be an item that we bring forward.
Okay, I can do that.
So just a note, Bill Chait is the freshman supervisor, main person, who, when there's a new supervisor school in November, he oversees it. I think it'd be very fortunate if we could have someone of his caliber, so, thank you.
I'll pursue it, thank you.
All right, Supervisor Chadwick, moving to board members, reports.
Regular report, the 14th, we had a PATH meeting. It was held at the TCOE instead of at our regular location. The rest of my scheduled meetings were canceled due to the weather and no power and no IT, so.
Supervisor Gross?
I'm looking.
Okay. Supervisor Brown?
I do not have any out-of-county travel, not much to report. I was happy to attend the event in Junction City last weekend for the eighth grade school fundraiser. What nice music we got to listen to over there. It was really nice to see some of the Junction City community and, I don't know, guys have a good thing going on.
I've had no out-of-county travel.
All right, Supervisor Gross?
Some out-of-county travel.
All right, I last week attended a CSAC board meeting where we got a brief update on both state and federal budgets. More details to follow as staff goes through all that. All right, on to the ad hoc committee updates. The California State Cannabis Legislation ad hoc, as we discussed last meeting, is going to be wrapped into the Commercial Cannabis Ordinance Amendment, so.
probably going to be in a very slow stage. I don't know if you would like me to address the comments of the public?
Sure.
Okay. So, the public question was, a person that has a one-acre county outdoor license, why can they stack state licenses? We don't, we don't oversee state licenses, and there's a difference between our outdoors and their outdoors, so we have felt that they've made a mistake and will come around to our relief at some point. But under, to light deprave, under, in a hoop house, they call that a mixed light, we call that an outdoor. So, whatever license they have with the state, they still have to comply with our county license. So, their state license allows them to use lighting, but our county license does not allow them to use lighting. So, the only advantage that they, or not advantage, the only thing they can do with lighting is light deprave. So, any, any person with a 10,000-square-foot license could go get several mixed cottage state licenses, and now that doesn't make any sense, but to do, and that's why people don't do it, but we don't oversee how many licenses a person has from the state. I hope that made it somewhat clear.
I think so. We can have more discussion.
And if there's, if there's more discussion, please contact me directly, and we can talk it out.
Were there any other comments, questions? I don't think that was it regarding cannabis.
Everything else will be discussed at the item level.
Okay, the ad hoc for retail cannabis ordinance, any comments?
Can you let me handle that?
Yeah, go ahead.
So, we've had some preliminary conversations, I'll say, and what Supervisor Brown has suggested, and we have looked at, is doing at least three workshops and putting together some type of timeline or outline, so people can check in what our process is. We're looking at putting together stakeholder, these would be individuals throughout the community from different points of views. We've contacted Karen Martenson, who is the CSAT Senior Legislative Representative, and we have a conference call with her. She also oversees the federal affairs and all things cannabis. And so, I think it's next Thursday at 10:00. I will verify that. And we have a meeting with the planning department next week to review other counties' regulations for retail. So, we're still in the very preliminary conversation of it. The weather and the internet last year, or last week, had some minor protein impacts on us, so that's where we're at, at this point.
Okay, thanks for the update. And my apologies, I skipped over the federal lands reintroduction legislation. Supervisor Gross or Brown, any updates?
We, we're in the process of setting up a public meeting, and staff is working on that, and gathering dates and places to hold it in, in H A T work. That's, unless you have something to add to that, Mr. Brown?
No, I think that was hopefully going to be in March.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, moving on to county matters. We, just to update the public, we have a 10:00 AM public hearing, which will last a little while, so most of these items on county matters will be heard in the afternoon. I'm going to try and take a couple items that I know are quick, and so we can have staff able to leave, and then we'll have to jump into our 10 o'clock public hearing. And like I said, that will take quite a while. So, I'm going to move on to item 5.3, under human resources, and we'll see how far we get before we take a quick break in the 10 o'clock hearing. Item 5.3, increase the allocation list, sorry, before I jump too far, I'm just trying to save time. These items include non-routine or controversial matters and are listed alphabetically by department and member of the board, staff, or public. May request an item to be heard out of order, and so that is what I'm doing. Any other member of the public? We have a very short time before our 10 o'clock deadline, before we jump back to another earlier item on the agenda. So, moving on to 5.3, increase the allocation for Health and Human Services Department, Human Service Division, from three to five staff service analysts, one, two, effective February 20th, 2019. Approximate costs and salary and benefits per month for staff service analyst one, and an A-step at 53, 59, and for staff services analyst two at A-step, 58, 38.
Good morning, Shelley Nelson, HR Director. This request is to provide administrative and analytical support in both the adult protective services and their quality assurance units. These positions enhance direct service and the credibility of the department. With rising federal and state initiatives, analysts are able to review changes, assess for local impact, and make recommendations concerning the department's activities, as well as prepare all required reports, engage in quality assurance activities, and monitor progress toward goals. So, that's based on the request.
Board members, any questions of Shelley?
Shelley, does this funding come through? How does this get funded?
I may have to have someone from Health and Human come up to define that, but my understanding is through state programming.
Thank you.
Let it be right up here.
Thank you, Liz.
Good morning. Yes, all of our social services programs are funded through state and federal programs. We, we see no general plan for those programs.
Thank you.
Anyone from the public wishing to comment on this item? CNN, I'll bring it back to the board.
Motion to approve as presented, Madam Chair.
Second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, so moved. Moving on to item 5.4, modify the allocation list for probation collections department, probation division to read, one, administrative clerk, one, two, or administrative coordinator, one, two, effective February 1st, 2019. No fiscal impact.
So, the probation department have allocations for admin coordinators, but they don't have, you know, it came to our realization that they didn't have the progressive series listed on their allocation list, so that limited their ability, if and when they needed, to hire somebody. So, that was why we were just wanting to get this corrected, because we're just adding the lower-level positions in the administrative classification series.
All right. Questions from the board?
No.
Any comments from the public on this item? Okay, I'll bring it back to the board.
Motion to approve as presented.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So moved, thank you, that was quick. All right, we're going to, I don't know if we'll get time to get through 5.5, it's a public try. It's a, it's an interval in kind of agenda items. So, item 5.5, take the following actions in the building, planning, and transportation departments, effective February 20th, 2019. Number one, change the department title on the allocation listing from planning and zoning to building and planning. Number two, move the allocations for building and development services and environmental health services from transportation, building, and development to building and planning. Number three, change the department title on the allocation listing from transportation, building, and development to department of transportation. Number four, approve the job description salary range, add to the departmental position listing and allocate to the building and planning department, a director of building and planning, at a range of D040. Delete the job description and classification for planning director from the allocation listing and the departmental position listing. And six, assign the director of transportation act as a department head for building and planning until successful completion of recruitment and appointment of a director of building and planning. Approximate costs and salary and benefits per month for new director of planning, or building. All right. Thank you. All right. Thank you.
So, both building and planning and the department of transportation have shared a director for many years, and with the expansion of the cannabis program, there's, you know, greater need for more management within all of these divisions. It's become increasingly difficult for them to be assigned to one individual. To add to this challenge, the passage of SB 1 and the construction of the new jail, which are also responsibilities under the same director, they're becoming, the DOT director's becoming extremely busy with both of those projects, including road projects. The county's reached a point where it must separate these duties, create an independent building, planning, director, and department, or accept that there will be unavoidable delays in all of these essential duties. Creating a recruiting for a building, planning, director classification would allow placing an executive-level staff member on-site to oversee all the functions, which include building, planning, cannabis, and environmental health. It would allow for better accountability and much improved customer service. In addition, it will relieve the DOT director of his duties to provide supervision for building and planning, and allow him to focus his efforts on major road projects and the construction of the new jail.
All right. Board members?
Yes. Just to be clear, at the description of 5.5, it states cost per month for finding director, a director of building, sorry about that, and it just doesn't state it, but it is in the back-up, I see.
The cost?
Yeah, 7,250 dot zero one.
Yeah, I had it on my draft version, so I don't know, it must have slipped on the viewers.
Public just wanted to make sure that they weren't willing to download the back-up, so I'll talk to them. That's it?
Okay. Any other questions? I'm going to just go by hands and just move on.
Okay. So, the 7, $7,200 a month, what sort of increases over that from the two or three times we've tried to run this before, and do we think the 7,200 is enough to get a qualified director of planning?
Okay, I don't know the exact increase, I wasn't prepared to answer on that one. I'll see if I have it here.
I apologize for not letting you know before.
That's okay.
Can you give the salary range?
333 was the former position for the planning director.
I think the salary range runs from about 87,000 to 116,000, so it gives us a range in there, which we feel is competitive to other counties our size.
And where were we before when nobody was interested?
I do not have that answer. That was prior to me, I don't have that answer.
I guess what I'm getting at is, I don't want to waste time, again, advertising and going through six months, and then we're told that this is not enough money for anybody to be interested in.
It is, I understand, it's a balancing act, it has to be within our budget, but it also has to be, as you say, attractive enough for someone to want to come to Trinity County, because we do want someone who is willing to spend their time here, and hopefully not back and forth over the hill, but sometimes that's the individuals that are willing to apply. But I think the salary range, from what we've compared, to other communities our size, and to essentially, if someone were in a deputy position and looking to move up, it would be, it would be attractive enough to make that step.
Okay, I'll take your word for it.
Any other questions, board members? No? Any questions with the public?
Redfin Elliot, Dublin City. I just want to request that you consider hiring someone locally, finally getting someone here who lives here, who cares about this community, and we put a great effort to it. So, just please give them priority on their, on their applications. Thank you. But I'm here for something else, so I'm sticking around.
Okay, anybody else? All right, bring it back to the board.
Motion to approve 5.5 as presented.
I'll second. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. So moved, thank you, Shelley.
Thank you.
Okay, so, let's see if we can get one more. Let's see. Nope, maybe don't go away, Shelley, I want to make sure that, well, let's take 5.6. We can get that cleared off the agenda, too. Take the following actions in Child Support Services Department, effective February 1st, 2019. Modify the allocation list in Child Support Services Department to read, one, account clerk, one or two, or accounting technician, one or two, or accounting technician, senior or staff service analyst, one and two. And number two, present to Trinity County Code Section 2.60, 3.60, reclassify employee E I D number 00287 from an accounting technician, senior to a staff service analyst, two, fiscal option at range G194, step G. Approximate costs and salary and benefits per month for a staff service analyst, two, at G step is 8246, and for an accounting technician, senior at G step, $7742. All right.
So, this employee, we have one employee that is working in the North Coast Regional Department of Child Support Services. Trinity County and Humboldt County regionalized a few years ago, and during this transition, the duties of this particular employee has evolved to be different than what they originally were hired to do. This position is under contract with Cal HR, CPS HR Consulting Services. This is a state-funded position through Merit Systems, and they provide human resource services for the Departments of Social Services and Departments of Child Support Services. They were asked by the North Coast Regional Department of Child Support Services to conduct a classification study of this individual's duties and compare and recommend if they should be reclassified, because that was their assumption. Based on the current responsibilities performed, as well as the knowledge, the skills, the abilities required to perform these responsibilities, they thoroughly reviewed and analyzed a position description questionnaire submitted by both the employee and the department head at Humboldt. They completed, they conducted an interview with the incumbent, and then they researched and classification with the Merit System program, and then they did formulate a recommendation, which is attached to this backup. It classifies that, she is an accounting technician, senior, and they are recommending that she be reclassified as a staff service analyst, one, two. The director of Humboldt and this regional office would like to place her at the staff service analyst, two, position at a G step, which would be just over 5% of what she's making right now. And we'd like to make this effective February 1st.
Okay. Board members, questions on this item? Okay, members, any member of the public? All right, we'll bring it back. Entertain a motion?
Motion to approve as.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, so moved. Thank you, Shelley. All right, so, we're going to take a break before we start the 10:00 AM, and so those items remaining on the county matters portion of the agenda will likely have to start after lunch. I anticipate the 10:00 AM public hearing taking a while, so we still have 5.1, 5.2, and 5.7 to address after the public hearing. So, by the time we delve into those items, it likely will be in the early afternoon. I hate to split up the agenda this way, but we do have a 10:00 o'clock
I hate to split up the agenda this way, but we do have a 10 o'clock public hearing on the Mines Rezone. So with that, we'll take a break, and I have to talk to council on a couple of things. And certainly join us back this afternoon if that item is of interest to you. All right, we're going to bring the item back to the board at our 10 a.m. public hearing, item 3.1. We'll read the item and then we'll have staff brief the board on the item. Item 3.1, conduct a public hearing to consider taking the following actions. Before I start that, I think you had to announce. I'm sorry to see.
Yes, Madam Chair, the applicant, Mr. Mines, has chosen not to attend today, so it's not construed as lobbying the board within the 12 months after leaving office. So I don't know if he has an agent here, but he will not be in.
Okay. And for the record, I have been asked, he did recuse himself on cannabis items while he did sit on the board, so. All right, thank you for that input. Item 3.1, conduct a public hearing to consider taking following actions concerning planning file P-17-45, known as Mines, regarding APN number 015-490-08, 015-490-09, 015-490-10, and 015-490-11 in the Douglas City area. Number one, adopt a mitigated negative declaration and the mitigation monitoring and reporting program, known as the MMRP. Finding that on the basis of the whole record before the board, including the initial study and comments received, that there is no substantial evidence that the project will have a significant effect on the environment and that a mitigated negative declaration reflects the board's independent judgment and analysis. The Planning Commission recommendation approval. And I'll read number two. Is that okay, counsel? Okay. Introduce, waive the reading of, and enact the ordinance amending Trinity County zoning ordinance, ordinance number 315, by rezoning AP number, APN assessor parcels 015-490-08, 09, 10, and 11, from highway commercial zoning designation to the heavy commercial C3 zoning designation, as provided for in Chapter 17.22A of the Trinity County Code, heavy commercial or C3 district. Planning Commission recommendation denial, unknown fiscal impact. Okay. With that, I will, we'll take these items separately, both one and two. We'll start with one. Joe, do you have anything to add to number one from the legal perspective?
Yeah, so number one was vetted by the Planning Commission, and their determination of the mitigated negative declaration was that it was acceptable, and they recommended approval by this board. So on that issue, this would be an appeal. That's the recommendation of the Planning Commission. And I know there was a full report from my consultant who's here today if you have.
Okay. Rick, do you want to walk us through?
Well, yeah, from staff level, I'm going to kind of go through what, what the ultimate action is going to be. I'll start with the CEQA and then we'll go on, but.
We'll take these two items separately.
Yeah. What I, where I want to start was just real briefly, the project is on Highway 3 East South of Highway 2009. It's being requested to rezone with the intent to develop one of the, one of the properties as a future commercial cannabis distribution facility. Currently, the land is zoned highway commercial. There's about six or seven parcels in that area. They're highway commercial. And then there's one parcel just to the south that is a zone C3, which is a heavy commercial. The original staff report to the planning had also had discussion about the use permit for building, but we will not be discussing that today as that's, today's not part of the requested action. As mentioned, we did have a Planning Commission hearing on January 17th, and it was held here. And I did put a link in the staff report to that meeting if anybody was interested in During the commission meeting, the commissioners conducted a public hearing to consider the attached CEQA document first, and in a four to one vote, recommended that the board of supervisors certify the initial study and mitigated NEGDEC. And that was consistent with the CEQA, including the findings attached to the department staff report. At that meeting, there was some comments that there were some issues with the CEQA. We went back and looked at the issues just to verify that they weren't substantial or changed the nature or character of the report. They did not, but we did issue or include a RADA in the staff report that showed some of those corrections, you know, that the school's located over here, this was located so far. And then also, we got a letter from one of the agencies that was requesting that we revise some of the wording for the archaeological, if there was a finding on the property during construction that they had certain practices. Very common to make those type of revisions because it doesn't change any of the mitigating wording, other than just maybe some of the wording. It's like dotting the i and crossing the t. It's not changing the wording, so. So the Planning Commission, as I said, had recommended approval of that. And what I have here is, as you know, our department in planning has been very limited. And so we had taken some of use permits and requested that an outside consultant assist us in preparation with CEQA document and use permit to be able to get it to you in an expeditious manner. And so with that, I have Bruce Grove from SHN, and he will describe the CEQA document and what was all involved in getting that put together.
Thank you. Thank you, Rick. Appreciate that, Madam Chair. Again, my name is Bruce Grove with SHN Consulting. We're out of Reading. And for the past 12 months, we've been insisting county planning staff in their cannabis program working on a variety of environmental documents, mainly mitigated negative declarations, very similar to this project here, the Mines Rezone project. About six, seven months ago, we were engaged on this particular project, and were asked to review past application materials and some revised application materials and make a determination of what we thought was the best course of action to comply with California Environmental Quality Act. Kind of taking a step back, how do we kind of come to that conclusion? Well, you know, we look at the merits of the project from an environmental aspect. We take in the application. We work not directly with the applicant, but there's a round of questionings to get a better understanding of what the applicant is actually looking for in their project. The applicant provides supplemental information, sometimes studies, sometimes county prepares studies such as the Tri-Me study. And we use a lot of other available county documents and other environmental documentations and resources that are maintained by other state and local agencies to come up with our environmental determinations in the mitigated negative declaration. When you read one of these things, you don't read them in bed. There's 77 checklist items that we look through in detail, and we reference where we find our data or information and how we come to our conclusions. Based on that review, we feel that there is not an environmental impact that has a potentially significant impact that cannot be mitigated, and a mitigated negative declaration was the appropriate vehicle to comply with CEQA for this particular project. The project went through the required 30-day public review circulating to state agencies. The public's notified of its availability. They are asked to comment on that. That 30-day public review was between November 2nd, December 3rd of 2018. Subsequently, we received two comments from state agencies, one the Native American Heritage Commission, and two the Regional Water Quality Control Board, offering minor suggestions and edits to the, to the, to the project, excuse me, to the environmental analysis. And then two, two comments from the public. Hearing was held on July, excuse me, January 17th with the Planning Commission. Leading up to that, there were several comments that staff did receive and considered in the deliberations on the project. The public in their testimony did raise some concerns that there was some information regarding distances and other, other minor parts of the document that weren't really reflective of existing conditions. We've addressed that, as Rick noted, within the RADA that's attached to your staff report. None of the information is considered new or significant that would require a recirculation of the document, nor did it challenge any of the findings of the environmental analysis and the conclusions. So with that, the Planning Commission recommended to the board forwarding the MND for your certification. And that's where we're at today, and I'm available to answer any questions related to that process or that document. Thank you.
Board members, any technical questions to staff or consultant?
Wait.
You wait? Okay. All right, so then I will open it up to the public to speak to the number one of the item on the CEQA item. Any members of the public wishes to speak to this?
Hi, I'm Gail Goodyear. I'm a landowner in Douglas City and have participated in the comment periods in April 2018 and in the fall and into January. I was deeply concerned about the initial study, the number of errors in it. I was so irritated after number 20 that I decided to give the county grace and recommend an appendix for each claim of significance or lack thereof, an appendix for each proposed mitigation. There was so much that the public had to guess, and I received numerous phone calls about what do you do with such a document laden with errors and including information that is not even relevant to the site? So I asked for a copy of the contract with SHN, which I received yesterday. According to the contract for the initial study and the proposed mitigated negative declaration, this contractor will coordinate environmental reviews and documentation with county staff and applicant consultants as necessary. I had noticed after a public meeting that I thought there was bias involved, and so I asked county staff about that. It is documented in the materials from 2008. I believe bias was introduced into the process as landowners were not allowed to participate in the coordination, but applicant consultants were. And it was obvious during a previous, the Huffman proposal, that there was a relationship between an SHN staff member who's not present today and the applicant consultant. Also, in the contract for the initial study and proposed mitigated negative declaration, the review of the document was concerned to me. Why would the county staff forward to our all-volunteer Planning Commission a document that was so flawed? So here is what the contract says. "In consultation with all affected parties, SHN will revise the draft initial study for final approval prior to public review." All affected parties, there's no definition of that in the contract, but as I was a notified party for this proposed rezone and initial, eventually a use permit, notified parties were not consulted, but we did provide copious amounts of revisions. Being told by county staff respectfully, and the consultant respectfully, that these are minor is not acceptable. I believe that the initial study and proposed mitigated negative declaration is not certifiable. Thank you.
My name is Marley Malistek. I have a video comment from Veronica Albee, although she could not be here. Bear with me. We've got two. I think this is the right one.
Good morning, board of supervisors. Thank you for allowing me to be here today in this format. My name is Veronica Kelly Albee, Marshall Ranch Road, Douglas City. I'm here talking now about the NEGDEC for the EIS, the initial study, that was presented to the Planning Commission with their recommendation to approve. I am asking that you do not approve that for several reasons. You probably have in front of you the eight pages of corrections that needed to be done by the planning department. Those were not discovered by them. They were discovered by the public, by the research that we did and presented at that Planning Commission meeting. There were no cumulative assessments done on any of the checkmarks that are required in a CEQA. Most importantly for us, we believe, is no assessment on the water share between the parcels, as well as the adjacent properties. That would be a direct environmental issue that would need to be looked at, and that should have a significant impact and require cumulative assessment being done. There was no site-specific soil sampling done as required by the Douglas City Community Plan. I have that page number in the documents that you received prior to the meeting. I hope you had a chance to look at all of that. But that is really important because across the street, there are environmental hazardous constraints on at least two of those parcels. And on this EIS, it specifically states, it does not know if those same environmental hazards are on these parcels. They need to be checked out. This needs to go to a full EIR before you guys can move forward on anything. We also believe the transportation report is flawed. There were no cumulative assessments done, we feel, in the, that really take into account clients, drivers from other facilities, as well as their own employees. And we feel like it was probably brought in a little low to avoid, avoid setting off that left, left turn lane that would be required. So we do ask that you take a look at that. It might require another look. And I want to thank you again for the opportunity to address you on the NEGDEC. I ask that you do not certify and ask for a full EIR. Thank you.
I think that was the first. Well done.
Yay. Now you've rehearsed them, didn't you?
Okay. Can we do that?
Everybody has a five tablet.
We have five tablets. Anybody else would like to comment on the CEQA element of this item?
Forgive me, it's all tied into one, so it's going to be a little harder to go through this and actually pull out just the, just the CEQA portion. Thank you for the glasses. The EIS has written, Dave Albee, Douglas City, Marshall Ranch Road. EIS has written correctly, still has major flaws. No required communal effects, communal, communal, I forgot the same. Thank you. No required environmental water restriction investigation for downstream water well effects required by a CEQA. No soil or building contamination inspections or tests and traffic analysis report that has not been corrected and has major issues skewing the accuracy of the EIS's negative declaration. That could end up costing county millions in road improvement projects. Please see details that I provided in writing. Testimony by multiple and extremely reputable citizens with 30-plus years of historic data referencing rezone and EIS requests, partial water limitations to wet, boiling dry during the summer months are completely ignored in the corrected EIS in favor of one flawed and limited report from a wet month from 2014. It is becoming apparent through other cannabis license holders that have faked water reports that those reports can no longer be trusted. We ask that the planning department do what everybody else does and trust, verify. How can the supervisors rely on a water report suspected as flawed by the commissioners as potentially inadequate, still be recommended by the planning department head in opposition of the commission itself? The project proposal is all tied into one request, and the excuse given when questions arise as to NEGDEC and rezone is that they need to be addressed in the CUP or CCUP portions only, and that, that is an error. That excuse lends itself toward applicant bias. The planning department head always falls back on the statement when questions become difficult. Just pass all the other stuff despite flaws, and we will address them well in the cut. It's ridiculous and biased and does not protect the rights of the citizens of this county. The planning department head and applicants keep stressing parcels have not been used. I'm sorry, that's. Are you sure? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Good morning. I promise, I'll leave my shoes on this time. I'm looking here at the environmental report.
Can you please state your name?
I'm sorry, my name's Michael Snyder. I live at 201 Ward Classic Place. I'm relatively new here, so I'm just watching this process in full, and I'd like to give you some basic commentary here. When people talk about water use on this site, the gentleman who's building it is talking about eight employees. Now, going through the 1600 process from my own home, I know that the Water Board figures a person uses between 100 and 150 gallons a day. This includes showering and laundry. I don't think anybody's going to be doing their laundry at a warehouse. These toilets are going to be used for the things people use toilets for, and people are going to be washing their hands. If you take eight people, a piece of toilet flush is a 1.2 gallons of flush at a maximum. You take eight people, you know, three times a day, providing nobody has bowel problems, and you're talking less than 50, 100 gallons of water in a day for the facility. So like this stuff about downstream is, you know, I mean, yeah, if somebody was in there manufacturing, if we were doing chrome plating, if we were doing something that, you know, people were doing something of that nature, it would be another story. But what we're talking about here is basically a warehousing and transport type of the facility. So the other concerns I heard had to do with lighting. That's easily fixed with a piece of sheet metal. You can make a shade and you keep the light out of people's yards. It's not rocket science. Backup generators, they're all built to be minus 55 dB, and trust me with my voice and the fact that I used to be Frank Zapp's lighting director, and I'm a little loud anyway, I'm probably louder than 55 dB right now in here. So at the end of the day, and I even heard one member of the Planning Board sit there through this secret process, and his first question was about all the water and the downstream impacts of this particular facility, and then his next question was, well, what if we don't develop these other lots, you know, in separate businesses? What impact will that have? I mean, seriously, you all need to pick a direction. I mean, any direction, but pick one. It's a whole lot easier to walk that way. Thank you.
Morning, Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Tom Malenko, Douglas City. I think at least the easy part of today's hearing is this mitigated NEGDEC. Most of the concerns I've heard, some repeated today certainly in the backup materials and as voices at a Planning Commission meeting, had to do with water availability and perk. And I think whatever those issues may be, if one looks at the mitigated NEGDEC for a rezone from highway commercial to heavy commercial, those uses in a heavy commercial versus a highway commercial will be less. Under highway commercial, someone without a use permit can, over to restaurants, over to Travel Plaza, basically welcome the traveling public as what highway commercial is. Traveling public around here often has to use the bathroom and then wash their hands. Lot of use of water, lot of use of septic. Commercial or heavy commercial, on the other hand, you will have a captive audience. Yes, they will be there every day, or every working day anyway, but you're not inviting 100 people to come in and use your bathroom. So it seems to me those concerns are actually addressed by a rezone. The other thing, and this is a frustrating across-the-board approach to environmental law, SEQA, neither notwithstanding, when a document comes out and members of public or reviewing people say, hey, this document is flawed, paragraph 1B, paragraph 4C, and they make adjustments, that becomes part of the record of decision, and it's as if the original document included all those things. I don't, that has caused me hits in my life in wrestling with these environmental laws, but that is the way of it. I certainly agree with it, but it is. So the record of decision before you is all the information that's there. So anyway, I think this is the easy part. I think the NEGDEC is appropriate in this case.
Morning, Madam Chair, Justin Hawkins, Hayworth. So I read the environmental documents also, and I think that it's pretty common, although I would agree it's unfortunate that oftentimes EIRs even, initial statements, all of these things, even some assessments are template-based. And oftentimes consultants are doing the work, and they're not local, and things get missed. And it's made me frustrated too, so I can understand the frustration from the public regarding this matter. And I would just say that, you know, nothing against the consultant here today, but I think some of these points could be avoided if we had the house, the staff in-house. Kind of mentioned it looks like the Planning Department's skeleton crew, and, you know, this just kind of goes to that again. We don't have planners in the Planning Department fully staffed either, so, you know, it makes the situation look a little worse than it probably is. So I just wanted to let you know that that's pretty common. We see that with a lot of different environmental statements, and they, in this case, don't make any substantial changes, and that's why I think we are where we are today.
Hello, I'm Jen Medine from Douglas City. Why would an applicant choose a building with years of logging truck and maintenance repair contamination, so much so that volunteer firefighters have stated that they wouldn't go in there if they're caught on fire for pure safety concerns? By the way, never addressed in the EIS, why would the Planning Department never sample the soil for contaminants the community plan stated were likely there? Before the EIS was corrected by public discovery that revealed contaminated waste was found and dug up on the old sawmill site, the Sheltons discovered the same waste dumps on their property. I'm sorry to say this discovery process, they were covered back up and over and left in place because parts of the property were already owned by the sawmill. There is evidence, there is enough evidence presented by the community plan, the Planning Department's own records of contaminated waste dumps and public discovery to require multiple soil sample and metal detection surveys to be done, to find contaminated soil and waste barrels discovered and reburied on these mine's proposed project parcels. Please protect the public and do the right thing.
Anybody else?
So my, good morning, my name's Dana Booty, and I'm from Hayworth, Hayworth. My concern with Mr. Mine's SEQA is that there's piecemealing involved. Definition of piecemealing on SEQA is that the state SEQA guideline defines a project under SEQA as a whole of the action that may result either directly or indirectly in the physical changes to the environment. This broad definition is intended to provide the maximum protection of the environment. I am requesting that you guys deny the NEGDEC for Mr. Mine's project based on the fact that he's made it known to members of the community that he has full intention of establishing a manufacturing facility at that property once it is rezoned to commercial, which does not require a conditional use permit for the manufacturing license on that zoning. And I feel that allowing him to go through with just saying that distribution is his intended use at that property puts the level of scrutiny that is going to be done on the environmental level at a lower level than you would if you were going to be having volatile manufacturing on the site. I know from experience, because my conditional use permit includes that, and I've had to get local fire marshal approval amongst other things to include into our initial study for the proposed impacts of our project. And I feel like letting someone go through who has made it known again that they have intentions that are wider than the scope of their environmental document would be a huge mistake on the Planning Commission's and Board of Supervisors' part.
We are at the SEQA item of the item, so we're taking it in two places, so I hear you or I see that you want to comment, so.
So the SEQA, basically, we already have all these things going on over there. I've heard concerns about the school being too close or just, I'm worried about children, other people, maybe they have plans of their own, and they're trying to get dismissed so that they can be maybe the only person in the county with the distribution license. I don't understand why they feel the need to try and shut out other people. But if we're worried about the kids, maybe we should take a look at the Douglas City stores on alcohol and their exposed gas tanks where they refill. Seems like that does get closer to the school. When people, let's say alcoholics, when they need their fix, they're going to be driving to the store that's pretty close to the school. People should worry about that a little bit more. What else concerns are there? Water quality, I mean, there's pretty much a dump site for vehicles there, lead, antifreeze ongoing in the soil, seems to be concerned. Having my cultivation life in here, I need a way to get my product out onto the market. Currently, the county has no way of doing that. My other option would be put money in the pockets of people not in this county. Those tax revenues are going elsewhere, other counties, one can keep it in county. So I want to see this thing get passed and get to work. Seems like this rezone is going to make this property less of an issue than what it is zone now. We're actually going to be using it in a way that would be less damaging.
My name is Liam Gogan. I am the owner of Douglas City Store. I've been here for 25 years. I've never had a violation for selling alcohol to anybody. As he says about people coming to my store for their alcoholic fix, I guess I could say the same thing about going to Mr. Mine's place for their marijuana fix, but I'm not going to go there. We don't sell alcohol to people that are intoxicated. They're not allowed to make it on property. They have to take their alcohol home with them and do what they want at their own home. So what he said there, I don't agree with at all. Also, I've been in that neighborhood for a long time. I looked at your EIS, and I've seen a lot of EISs through restoration, through fish and game, and, you know, there's good, there's bad, there's middle of the road, and there's really, really good ones. And yours falls in the lower end. And that's not, I guess not to blame for you, but using the template theory for what you did was not correct. That area there probably not per, it is contaminated throughout from the Douglas City Garage to across the street to the place next to it, to Lee Shelton Trucking, which I think the last, meaning we're at the 17th, Dr. Alby, who mentioned that there was 18 trucks a day washed there for 10 years straight, seven days a week. Not true. You know, he didn't even mention the people who owned it for the prior 10 years, the Bundy's. He just went back to Lee Shelton, who hasn't even had that place. And they didn't have the water for that, and I'm surprised that you don't know that they didn't have the water for that. So your EIS and SEQA, it's not right, it's not accurate. Everything, your measurements were wrong. It was just very, very flawed. And I'm not against mines, manufacturing, doing what he's doing. I'm against it being done there because this is not the right property for it. I think that you also have all the things I've just spoken about that are negative. One of the things, the traffic report, if it does show up on the low end, I just saw something a little earlier that said that they put a right-hand lane in Denny, I think at the cost of $2. something million for a right-hand turn lane there. I'm just wondering who would shoulder the cost if the traffic study was flawed, and we did have to put a $2. something million right-hand turn lane there. So I just wondered, I also, you know, go back to what our community is about, and our community is about our community. And the community of Douglas City, it was spoken on the 17th, and will be spoken again today, I just seem by the people who signed the application that was there, or the request that they wanted or did they not.
Okay, sorry, I'm trying to...
Hundreds of people have signed that in Douglas City that live in Douglas City that don't want this.
Okay. Any other members of the public? All right, see you now. I'll break back to the board. Board members, before I go back to staff, do you have specific questions to staff?
I guess I'll start off. In the NEGDEC, I had a little bit of heartburn over the odor issue. So my interpretation of this is that when you looked at air quality, you looked at the North State air quality, and none of those items would be put into the air. And then when you look at odor, it stated that doesn't provide, that the county ordinance doesn't provide an odor control measure. My problem with it is that the county has declared cannabis odor a nuisance, and we have that in code. So without looking at this odor issue, we come in a situation where the public, if there is an odor issue at a later date, will then have to go through the public nuisance process and then come back and possibly have that mitigated or shut down or some other problem where this should be dealt at the EIS level, and then if there's a way to mitigate it, then it should go into the CUP. So you state that there's no information that cannabis odor will be significant out of a distribution plant, and I just don't really buy that. And I didn't see, and I could admit, there was a lot of reading to do here, that there's some data that can back that up, but I would assume, you know, a couple thousand pounds of packaged cannabis or in cooling refrigeration rooms will have a odor level that would need to be at least mitigated.
With regards to odors, I would say the premise in the document is that being an inside facility and some refrigerated units over time, that would help not fully eliminate, but limit potential for odor to be emitted from the project. Again, this is an indoor facility versus an outside nursery cannabis grow exposed to some light and various amounts of heats that could generate a little bit more odor. This already, the project is proposed, is really nutty, it's looking at a height of about three months out of the year when you would have the most amount of product on site. So based on that, we felt that the odor issue was not, would not be significant.
Well, I can't imagine a distributor only having three months in their warehouse.
That would be the height.
The height.
Yeah, correct.
So... So I would assume they would have product there year-round.
Correct. And again, being an enclosed facility versus an open-air facility, I felt that would help, um, minimize that, that impact.
Well, I would agree that, that there would be less impact than being open, but I would find it very hard to believe that there wouldn't be an impact into the neighborhood that would at least be something that would need to be looked at to be mitigated.
That could also always be handled with an additional condition to the CUP requiring it. Again, the rezone is general, the CUP is specific, and it's not uncommon that there are specific mitigations to that proposal. So, uh, things like, uh, you gotta keep, you gotta bring all the cannabis indoors at night, and you have to have a, a system that brings the air in and shoots through a HEPA filter or, you know, we, there are various conditions that you can develop in the CUP to cover any issues that might be such as this.
Well, my problem, Rick, is that the document states that the county doesn't have an ordinance over this, and the state doesn't have an ordinance over it. So how does it get put into the CUP?
At the...
Well, it's, if, if the environmental document...
Or by staff, and you make the recommendations.
If, I mean, we've been told, as all these ordinance go through, that if you're going to a CUP, you don't have to write specific things into the ordinance. But here, this is telling us that since we didn't write specific things into the ordinance, it really doesn't need to be looked at, um, because it's gonna be inside, and, and so we don't have an odor requirement. So, uh, I didn't see, and again, you know, this is for future stuff, but in the CUP, I didn't see any odor CUP recommendations from staff.
Okay. Noted, and it can be addressed through conditioning of the CUP. The board and staff can work together to add up time conditions to make a full agreement.
That's it for me, for now.
No, Rick's correct. In the, in the process of formulating the CUP, it's not uncommon for the planning commission to also make certain recommendations based on a business type. And at that point, we can put restrictions on the business or mitigating, um, things like smell. So that's something that, as this goes back to the planning commission to consider a CUP if, if today's approval, if there was an approval today, that the board's question of that issue would definitely be raised by staff, and the planning commission can make suggested changes as well as staff.
Well, my heartburn's more that, that we say it's not a problem than that in the environmental document.
Okay, um, Rick, I, I know you tried to address that a little bit in the staff report as well, and he spoke to it about being indoors versus outdoors on the smell issue. And so I think we'll, we can take care of it, as you said, through the CUP. Um, the items that the public have raised, and I think you indicated earlier that they were addressed through the ERADA, is that, do you feel, is any other new item that came up?
Uh, I believe it has, but I defer to the consultant.
No, with regards to the discrepancies that, that were noted by the public, uh, we, we treated those accordingly within the, uh, the ERADA document. Some of the other, you know, commentaries regarding the contract bias and, and other relationships with other, um, cannabis developers, if you will, are not, are raised today, as far as I know, for the first time. And that is not a CEQA-related issue. And if the board would like me to address that, I absolutely can.
I would love you to address it. Please address it.
The county approached SHN about a, a little over a year ago, again, to assist with, uh, the cannabis program, as well as other planning services that they needed assistance with throughout the county. Um, part of that process, and we, SHN, my company, took a good, long, hard look and said, "You know what, cannabis industry is a, it's a booming business, but if we're gonna be representing the county, we need to make a commitment to be on one side of the fence." So from a business planning perspective, uh, we corporately decided to not work with cannabis developers in Trinity County. And I'm not even aware if we're working with cannabis developers anywhere else at this time. Um, as part of our contract with Lessin, when we drafted up, it says, "In addition to that, in addition to SHN not working with other cannabis developers in Trinity County, we're gonna set a strict firewall, a strict firewall between the applicants and SHN staff. They have to actually work through county planning staff to get to us, whether they're sharing information, whether they want to talk to us. We will not talk to them without representation of county staff on a conference call or a meeting." So we are, we are completely clear of any bias. Um, the comment regarding the Hoffman project, uh, that's a surprise to me. I'm not aware if our, my office manager, Mark Chaney, I don't believe he's in, uh, knows, um, or is in good friends with any of the other consultants that are involved. The consulting industry is somewhat of a small industry, and we do know each other, but, um, that's not to say we're in bed with Hoffman or, or any other applicant, uh, if you will.
Thank you.
I also want to point out that when we prepare an application or environmental document, even though we have the consulting staff on board, the consultant does have to ask the applicant questions of his project and give, you know, certain descriptions and certain reports prepared. So there has to be interaction between the applicant and the, uh, and the folks that are preparing it. It can't be completely separated.
So when it comes to the previously contaminated soils allegedly, what is the responsibility of the owner in this project to take a look at that? I don't believe that it was looked at. There's claims that, that that was there. Uh, I, I don't, I've never come across this, so I don't, I'm not sure what the, if that's in the environmental document or what the deal is.
From a CEQA issue, and the courts have been clear on this, we are to look at the merits, the environmental implications of the project on the environment. We're not looking on the environmental impacts of the environment on the project. We did review available records, and while there was some contamination identified off-site, the regional board, which manages groundwater cleanup and issues involving the soil contamination, um, does not have an open file on the, on those sites. And we didn't see any information that led us to believe that, in fact, it would be onsite at this time. If it were, we would have noted it, and then that becomes an applicant response of a property owner in working with adjacent property owners to identify responsible parties for cleanup and source contamination and what have you. Um, so we didn't dig into it any deeper, we're not required, uh, you know, under CEQA, we're not putting a school site here, this is a, a heavy use proposed, um, and therefore we satisfied our reporting requirements.
Then there's also no significant earth disruption proposed. It's a, a site that is comparable to the past uses. And there's really no proposed, uh, earthwork as part of the project, so, um, mitigation was really not explored that deeply, and I sense those aren't as strong.
I, I do have a quick comment, clarification. One of the comments was, is that you could build a manufacturing plant without a CUP, and that is not correct. If at a later date, there still is a CUP required in all zones, is required for future...
Thank you, I was gonna bring that up. Uh, it does speak to that in the staff report. If they were to do other projects on the other parcels, they would have to go through another process with the CUP. And that certainly would apply to anything manufacturing related to cannabis. Thank you for bringing that up. Okay, anything else? Nope? All right, so I'll bring you back to the board. What is the board's pleasure? Is that good? Do you have a motion? Or you have a question?
I'm just disappointed, but, um, it's...
Do you have a question on, on the poll, yes?
No. I just, I have a lot, a lot of questions, a lot of problems, but a lot of desire to have this, so, just torn. Um, would you like a motion to move this along?
Uh, so we can get to the next round, sure.
Okay, I just won't get a second on it. Motion to approve, uh, 3.1 time in zoning, item 1, mitigate a negative declaration and the mitigated monitoring report.
Okay, do I have a second? I am not able to second for discussion, am I?
Yes.
Yes.
I can, so I will second for discussion. All right, um, any comments on this? Staff, uh, do you recommend...
Sure, I'll have a comment, discussion. Just because of everything that's been presented today, all the questions that have come up, I cannot support moving forward with this. I think it's, it's extremely important that this type of business be in Trinity County. I think this needs to be looked at and vetted a little bit more for this location. I have concerns regarding the soil. I've been through that myself, having to dig down an inch to six inches to, to fix and sterilize the soil problems. Um, Keith floored me with the odor problem, I thought, thank you for bringing it up. Um, that helped me, and that's a comment.
Okay.
Yeah, my comment is, is, uh, I don't have problems with a lot of the document. Um, but the odor issue to me is a precedent-setting issue. Um, and we either will have to change our, um, go to what we were told that these things can be done in the CUP, or we need to change our ordinance for an item to be not considered because it wasn't in the ordinance here in Irvington. So at this time, that's my major reason on the, to be a Novo on the NAGDA.
I still would have a lot of questions and would like to see a lot more information. And I don't think it's necessary, but I'd be on some, uh...
So I, I have a couple of questions. Um, as Rick, and you pointed out, addressing the odor in the CUP, typically where some of that's done, I understand Supervisor, um, sorry, Groves' comment that it's not in our ordinance. How was this addressed with the previous item in Hayfork? I think, was that not a distribution, uh, facility? The Huffman, Hoffman, uh, project?
I'd have to bring Lessin to know if that project, Huffman, or not.
Okay. So, Lessin, do you happen to recall?
So it was basically the same treatment and...
Toby.
Do you want to come with Toby, please?
So we can hear.
For the Hoffman cannabis distribution project in Hayfork, it was the same treatment for odor. People were maybe not as concerned about it because their homes are farther away. So that's perhaps why it's coming up right now.
Did you address it, though, in the CUP?
In the CUP, the distance was considered to be the mitigation.
Okay, okay, so, uh, had it not, it would have, it would have some other stipulations, I imagine. Okay. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
One of the things, the problems that have been brought up, such as a center turn lane, can be resolved by having the person who is applying for this permit pay for that and move that forward. Most of these items are resolvable, except for the community, so, and their, their personal desire.
I, I would say as a traffic engineer that, that, you know, not only are you looking at what is the traffic access in the site, but you also have to look at the facility. Highway 3 in that location is relatively low use. Um, to give you an example of left turn lane, Tom Bell Road is going to the dump and also has the heavy traffic coming into Weedenville. Neither that just barely warranted a left turn.
Apparently, this is different when I would deal with the city of Los Angeles. I'm sorry, I said that word. But we would be required to put in sidewalks, put in freeways, put in center turn lanes, make everything the way the city or the county wanted. And I assume we can do that here, maybe in the county.
You can always...
Wish, okay, I'll wish, and that was on his...
Well, since we're still discussing the traffic...
I'm sorry.
Rick, I think another issue on the traffic is the potential traffic on the, the back road for the parcel that's not connected to Highway 3. And to me, that, when this, when this thing got to put together as all four parcels, it caused a larger issues, having, this is getting a little bit off the EIS, but the traffic, for example, you now have a C3 where its only legal access is off of a smaller connector. So I think some of those things are things that should have been, uh, looked at, maybe giving up that access and having the access from Highway 3 through the other properties, things like that.
I don't recall specifically, but I believe that the applicant was open to those type of restrictions to have an access to Marshall. I mean, we'll still have to maintain higher access, uh, as always, but, uh, any other type, we can deal with the disusement access through adjoining property or we can exclude that from the rezone itself.
Quite frankly, a lot of, and this is getting a little bit monkey in my planner's hat, but the, the four parcels being one parcel would have mitigated many more of the issues, such as water for one parcel.
And, and you can always request that as, as we decide, you know, the request to merge.
So, you can...
You can number one.
Thank you. We're gonna have to... Go ahead, Supervisor Brown.
Um, one of my concerns is that, I guess I would find some of the information in the ERADA to not be called, um, minor. Um, seems like some of the changes in the ERADA are, I would call, significant, especially when dealing with the distance between the existing, um, homeowner, homeowners nearby. Um, they had put it into, previously it was done as a mile, um, .6 mile, but it's actually, I think they reduced it to 540 feet or something like that. Um, so I'm, I'm hesitant to approve this as it is.
Supervisor Brown, sorry you catch on, it was related to what?
The ERADA, in the ERADA.
Right, but what was the specific?
Um, specifically, they, uh, the nearest sensitive receptors to the project site are, and before they have said, residential developments .25 miles. It's actually 520 feet.
Okay, I heard something wrong, thank you. Uh, so Rick, could you go back to if the board wanted to do something? You kind of cut off, I didn't quite hear.
Um, the alternatives to this are either to approve the environmental document or to, uh, re, or to direct staff to return, uh, study certain items, recirculate it, and then return the, the draft item, uh, at a later date.
And, but we don't have the applicant really ask that either?
Well, we can direct staff if the applicant chooses to stop, and he stops. Quite frankly, I would, I would like to move in that direction, two things, um, traffic and, and odor, or two that I find, um, problematic in the, in the environmental document. And it's not the use of water. I agree that the, uh, was, what people said, that this use will probably be definitely less than a restaurant, um, but that's, doesn't mean that a restaurant should be there with no water either, so...
And in the traffic, you're concerned about access?
I'm mainly concerned about the access on the backside on the county road versus Highway, okay, three side.
Okay. And then I also heard mention soil.
I thought you, I thought there was just the soil issue.
The way it was addressed is isn't of our business, we don't have to look at it right now, and it's up to the, uh, up to the owner to take care of in the future, and then deal with the county when he has to do that, in whatever way they want to deal with the county for letting him go ahead and put this there. Also, with the traffic, keep in mind, it's very close to 299 Highway three intersection, and stop sign there, and a merge, it's, it's, can be difficult for old people.
So Supervisor Groves, does that mean a motion, and do we need to, um...
Do you have a, do a subsequent?
Okay. I'll put a subsequent down to, uh, give directions to staff to take another look at, or work on the environmental document pertaining to, um, well, I guess we'll just add all three, the soil, contamination, traffic, and the odor, if that's what people were working for.
And on the traffic side, uh, you're also talking more access than anything, did I get that correctly, or?
Well, my, my biggest concern on that, um, first off...
Let's get a motion.
Okay, all right.
Do you have a second, Supervisor Groves?
Second.
Thank you.
So on the traffic issue, as it stands, um, the traffic off the backroad is my biggest concern, but there is an issue that, that will have to be looked at, and that's, you know, we still have four parcels that are going to have a lot more ability to do something at a later date, and so we're looking at the traffic on the whole picture.
Want to point out, though, that in the, in the rezon, when you're looking at it, you're looking at also the standpoint of it being currently zoned, I would commercial, which is a very heavy traffic use, and changing it to heavy commercial, which is a lesser traffic use. I did include numbers specific to that, but you always have to think back that this property was assumed to generate traffic, and all of our, our, our regional traffic, or RTP, and, and all the things that we look at, including housing, that make that assumption that there will be traffic there.
But also understand that if a Walmart went in there, you'd make them put in a traffic term. Yeah.
It's more than five times as worse.
Do not have any news.
Okay, uh, board members, we have a subsequent on the table, any questions with that? Okay. So, um, to a roll call, please.
Supervisor Finland?
Yes.
Supervisor Groves?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Nay.
Supervisor Chadwick?
Aye.
Supervisor Moore?
Uh, no.
I was gonna say, just to advise the board, because these changes are, uh, could be somewhat significant, we will recirculate this once the, uh, appropriate things are done, and then we'll also bring it back through the planning commission unless we direct someone.
So, right, um, comments, board members on that?
I prefer that method.
So get recirculated, any new information, from what we've heard on these items, and we'll have to go back to the commission. So with that, do we need to postpone the hearing on the rezon?
The rezon, well...
So, so the, the secret document anticipate, is, is anticipating a rezon, so without the approval of the secret document, we wouldn't look forward with the rezon?
We would not, right.
It would come as a package, so essentially you would need to approve the secret document, and then we could re-approve the rezon, and then you can move on to the CUP if there was still one of them.
So I'm sorry, Supervisor Chadwick was waiting, and then, sorry.
So, part of the process of this, um, has left the community feeling that they weren't properly notified and, um, allowed to weigh in. So going forward, I would encourage, um, and it's not due to lack of, of, uh, ability, and I'm not saying that in any negative way, but this, but the community itself of Douglas City feels, and this has led to part of the grief over this rezon, as that, their voices weren't included, or even it was up to them to do their research, it was up to them to make the corrections, it was up to them to follow up on the planning department and the planning commission. My understanding is that it even got bumped a week because the notifications did not go out correctly. So I would strongly encourage, uh, good messaging and clear communication, so as projects go forward, especially of such controversial, um, level, that the community gets to weigh in. So I would just encourage that, and I, I would, um, endorse that, and I think that, that would eliminate some of the grief. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor?
I'd like to make a motion to table three dot one, item two, to increase the weighting and act in ordinance amending Trinity County's zoning ordinance three dot, three fifteen, um, to return in a timely manner at the same time the negative deck comes in.
Okay. You have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All clear?
I, I have to say that I actually like this area for this item, but if it doesn't work out, it doesn't work out. So we need to hear a lot more information from, from the local residents, from Supervisor Chadwick, um, and, and good reasons why it shouldn't work out there, or why it might, because it is something that this county needs, and whether we, whether it, uh, the item that, that Dan brought up troubles me. So I'm done.
Okay, I have a motion and a second.
You do.
Quick question of staff, um, this will come back when this is, when the secret part went through, the process, right?
So the items that you've addressed would be readdressed in the secret document, the secret document and the rezon, and if there's still a CUP pending at that time, would go back through the planning commission, and it would hopefully come back to you with recommend, recommendation for approval or denial, and at that time you see them together, again as a package?
And another clarification, um, if the applicant, I'm not sure I heard this correctly, if the applicant says, "No," I don't want to jump through all those, is it up to the applicant to, to go forward on those items? Okay. Uh, I, I have no idea, but, um, just want to make sure we're all clear on that. All right, so I have a motion and a second to table, uh, two of three point one. All of them?
Any room for public comment between the two of us?
The item, the item was tabled, you could choose to take public comment on it, but it is going to come back before the board and, and at a different time, and the same venue, so...
We're going to, um, it's going to get tabled, do you, and it will come back together? Other than that, um, we're going to move forward.
If I could just make one comment?
Go ahead, sir.
Thank you. Our community has been doing this for a year and a half. Maybe we can wait until my daughter graduates from college, but in the interim, we are stuck, still not sleeping. And I know that this community needs a distribution center. You guys already voted on one, it's, it's in Hayfork, in a appropriate industrial zone. But please consider this neighborhood, um, and what we have gone through, and going through and postponing this yet another six months to a year, and I might die of a heart attack by then. So I just want that considered at least. We are, we are... And, and the last thing is, we have public support, public that you've never seen before, ever. I'm sure this is a record. So tabling this item means that we have to rally this support once again. It makes it really easy for the community to say, "Are you guys doing this on purpose? Are you..." And I, you know, I'm not trying, I'm just seeing, the perception of the community is, "We are, are left in the cold again, and we have to rally our troops again." And how many times can we continue to do this before your, um, project is passed because no one cares, and we can, we can step up here every single time like that? So that is, that is my major concern, is that every time it looks like, "Whoa, this won't pass," it's postponed. Thank you.
Any other comments?
I'll let you know.
Yep, since I opened it up, come on up.
Adam Chair, Justin Hawkins, Hayfork. I think that we definitely missed an opportunity with this project. There, in other localities, are opportunities to increase infrastructure with developments like this, and I think one of the main problems with this site and the neighborhood is the lack of water. Yet there's a water service district right across the river. I don't know why it was never proposed to bring water over to the neighborhood. I think it would be a win-win for everybody. And this is certainly something that's not like, I'm not talking out of the ballpark here, maybe from Trinity County, it's a little unusual, but I would say that, um, maybe we're there, and we have a chance. Second thing I'd like to mention is that, I don't know if you can deny that this is anti-cannabis, that situation. The opposition has spoken many times, and they go to great lengths to try and extract cannabis from their arguments, but if you look at the totality of their statements publicly, it's clearly anti-cannabis. And I may not be as good a historian as the gentleman from Indian Creek, but I like to read history, and I think that we all know, or heard at least, that history repeats. But if you read any history, I think that's not true. History tends to rhyme. We're still the same people on the same planet. We still basically drink the same water that's cycled through the environment. We still breathe the same nitrogen molecules in the air that our predecessors did. Nothing's really changed, but the ideas change. And so the, and the parallel here to where we are today is what was going on in 1935, two years after prohibition was entered into this country. During that time, alcohol manufacturers, and alcohol is a very dangerous drug, and if you wanted to make apples and oranges, the impacts of alcohol to people, kill you in one night, it'll kill you over a lifetime. And I know that people who smoke marijuana are classically lazy, but it's probably better than being aggravated, angry, and looking to beat somebody up, which is very common, or it dangers the society generally. So just like it was not fair to prosecute the alcohol manufacturers in 1935, or discriminate against them, I don't think it's any different today with cannabis manufacturers. Thank you.
There was a petition that went around Douglas City that was signed by a lot of people in Douglas City area.
Hundred and fifteen.
Hundred and fifteen, is that Douglas?
That's just DC residents.
Sir, if you have to speak, sir, can you speak to the board?
Okay, there was a petition that went around Douglas City, and it asked the people in Douglas City, "Do we want this facility in Douglas City?" Irregardless of the EIS, do we just, as a general population, want this facility there? I looked at the names, I've known the people of Douglas City for a long time. I've owned that store for two decades plus. I know my community. It was signed by pro-marijuana people, growers, anti-growers, people who never want to see marijuana. The whole community weighed in, a hundred and fifteen people weighed in on that to not have it in our community. As far as the water thing went, I was part of Trinity Restor-, Trinity River Restoration when they had the, uh, input put in, and that input that was put in is not put in from the river, it's put in from Weaver Creek there. To get extra water to these properties down there, would take an unbelievable amount of work. It took an unbelievable amount of work to get the intake to be where it is now, because they can't take water from the river. To take extra water out of Weaver Creek, as we know, it's not a lot of water in there as it is, um, to supply these four, if not more, whatever happens on the other properties with water is something that is beyond, would really, really be feasible to do. In general, I think with the people of Douglas City signing petition, I said a hundred and fifteen people do not want this, and these people of all ranges, growers, non-growers, that, uh, should it just not die there? People don't want it. It's a simple thing, you know, the people of Douglas City are spoken against this, not because we're anti-marijuana, pro-marijuana, we don't want it in our community, because it's a place to be. And if you look at these shelters building, it's not your type. It's, uh, the other things are going to be really tough to deal with. And those people live like a hundred, a hundred feet away, not two, twenty-two, five miles away. So, there you go.
I'm saying frankly. Just a couple of things I just kind of want to point out here. One, seems like we're, we're continuously re-remoting our cannabis program over details brought up at the last minute that could be easily rectified. A three hundred dollar carbon filter will take care of any kind of smell within this building. I could grow that whole library full of marijuana, if I had a three hundred dollar carbon filter, you would not have a clue. This is how people have historically grown marijuana indoors and not been caught by their neighbors when it wasn't legal. Secondly, it's very hard, it's kind of up in the room. Obviously, this is about a fight over cannabis. If we were building any other building, any other business there, it would not be a problem. And I'd also like to point out, there's over two hundred and twenty licensed, state-licensed cannabis farmers. I'm one of them. I employ full-time three people, and many times I have twenty people on my job, all local people who love their paycheck. This whole situation reminds me very much of back home, when they made the law, if, uh, if you're brown, we can pull you over, check your ID. Suddenly, the farmer's fields are rotting. Vibellia onion crop rotted out, St. Carolina took the worst hit to their GDP since the Civil War, they're, they're just slightly pulled off. Seems like a lot of, it's just, it's total hypocrisy to me, and the people that are moving forward with this are very methodic. I thought, you know, four years into this, two years, I thought I could appeal to these people. I said, "Come look at my project on Grass Valley Creek. We returned a hundred and thirty million gallons of water to the mouth of basically the Trinity River, right where it meets. Didn't have to do that, that water ran from eighteen sixties, eight-inch culvert used to water grass. We cut it off, we don't need that. I invited the anti-marijuana group from, from Goose Ranch, "Hey, come out and look at my farm, here's my gate code, come anytime you like." What they did was call my lender to see if I was a resident, which is illegal, you know, and, and, and it works throughout this whole community. Suddenly, when I go to sell farm, they're notified from the title company, that group that I'm selling my farm, also illegal. And to sit here and, y'all have a opportunity to make a decision, where what you do is right. This business supports this community, and yes, there are people who do not like it, but there's many things I don't like. And I'm not, it just seems to be total hypocrisy to let this die on little minutest things. If that soil is, is, is contaminated, it wasn't contaminated by him, so why make him, you know, why tie the two together? Just let him do his project, let, traffic's not an issue there. It, it, it's just, I guess it's just frustrating for the amount of money that we spend in hopes of furthering our business, to see things like this, how easy it is disrupting.
My name is Kelly Elliott, but I'm here to speak on behalf of Jamie and Will and Kent Hildon. Her note to you is, "My husband and I own the parcel directly to the west of this project and has already impacted our lives. We were supposed to break ground and build our home this year, but these plans have placed, have been placed on hold pending the outcome of this rezon. We are not interested in living with a cannabis distribution facility in our backyard. Our properties are separated by the small strip that is Marshall Ranch Road, and that is not enough. Please do not paint me in an anti-cannabis light. This is Trinity County, cannabis is here to stay. However, I do not feel this location is appropriate. No, the Hoffman project did not have a single person show up or write in to oppose No, the Hoffman Project did not have a single person show up or write in to oppose their project, because it was in an appropriate location, not situated next to an established residential community. If the Board of Police Supervisors feels a distribution center is necessary for Trinity County, which is not by any means an emergency, there are numerous distribution facilities in California, then it should be set up where it is properly zoned. There are municipal and emergency resources, and should not be placed in an area of established residential community. Please note that your decision is going to significantly impact our life moving forward and that of the residents and community of Douglas City. I sincerely hope the board chooses a community over cannabis.
Madam Chair, I just want to be clear that the only issue on the table now is tabling item 3.1.
Right. That's, did everyone hear that? It was your kind of spot spoken. One more time.
The only issue that was open for public comment at this time is the tabling of the item, and in fact, that you see from the tabling of that item, as far as the project that may or may not be built if CUP is approved, is not for the board.
Kay Grace from Lewiston, and the tabling of this project. And the issue with it is, the Board of Supervisors was the planning commission, and you delegated that authority out to others. And I've spoken about this before, that it would be expedient and good in every way, except for it'd take more of your time and effort, to become the planning commission again. Because what happens is, and I've been here for years, and these projects are delayed, and then the communication is messed up. You, you guys are sending it out in third party yet, when please take back being the planning commission. You wouldn't be tabling this issue. You would be immersed in it. You would know what was going on. You would have been part of the discussions, and this would have been the end of the day for it. So, please consider taking that back, because then you wouldn't have to be tabling this. Thank you.
Good morning, the Udean. My final comment on the tabling of this issue, I think that if y'all remember back to when Dollar General wanted to move into Hayfork on the corner of Oak in Maine, that's the only other time I've seen this much negative community support for a development going on in Trinity County. And based on that support, that Dollar General was not built, and that lot is still vacant. And I think that set a precedent on what the Board of Supervisors should do when there's this much county support. So, I think that tabling this issue is a mistake, and you guys really should go with what the, with the community says, because they're, they've come out in force, and they have every right to state their opinion. And they're directly impacted by this. I don't know if you guys have driven down Marshall Ranch Road, but the backside of this property really is less than 20 feet away from the homes that are down there. I did, after I saw the initial planning commission meeting. I mean, I don't even think that there's enough room for a fire truck to turn around behind that property. So, I really think, again, the tabling of this, of this topic should be rescinded, and you guys should go with the precedent that you guys set when you denied the Dollar General.
Good morning, or whatever it is now. It's in Hayfork, citing also back to the Dollar General meeting, which I attended all of them. In fact, after the first meeting, the community was refuted based on their opinion, and there was a second hearing, it was tabled. And we needed to bring back actual information. And the Dollar General was not rejected based on community opinion. It was rejected on the strong community showing up and presenting facts. So, that could happen at the next meeting, but this decision needs to be made based on facts, not on community consensus. Unfortunately, that is the nature of, of this, of the position that we're all in here. The Dollar General was shot down due to the need for a use permit and the, and the variance, and they couldn't figure out how they were going to turn the trucks around. They couldn't figure out how they were going to get the school bus around the corner. They couldn't. There are school bus stops in that vicinity, and Dollar General was unable to prove that they would have every truck in and out of there before 7:00 AM. That's why it lost. That was the point that I was going to make initially. I wasn't sure how to tie it together with the tabling thing.
Okay, tabling, tabling, tabling.
Lisa Wright from Lewiston, just briefly, I think we're mixing apples with oranges a bit. So, on your, your previous motion to reassess the IS and the mitigating neg deck, it really pertains just to the rezoning. So, adding an order element, then that would just be, is there order from a C2 rezoning? The CUP, as it relates to cannabis, is totally separate. And I think that kind of got mixed in and lost, and that may create some unnecessary work and duplication of effort. So, really, what's not on the table there is the discussion about cannabis at all. So, what I'm hearing then from the community of Douglas City is they don't want any rezoning to a C2, that they would prefer to leave that a highway commercial. That's what it seems, you know, that it's not. But, on the other side, I'm hearing them say, "No, it's because of cannabis." So, we're just meshing some things together here that procedurally are inaccurate. The SEQA really pertains to the rezone to C2, not a rezone that would allow, that would lead to the cannabis business being there. So, just wanted to really point that out for you, so we don't get those two things mixed up. Thank you.
Okay, tabling, tabling. Yay or nay?
My name is Lisa Barrow from Hayfork, and honestly, I don't know if Trinity County can afford to delay and deny this opportunity. Right now, the percentage of students in the school district in Hayfork who are socio-economically disadvantaged is at 80.6%.
I have to cut you off.
This number is higher than some inner-city districts.
We've got to do something.
We've got to do something. I know.
And I appreciate your comments.
Me too. I'm saying, don't table it. Don't table it.
And council and staff, we're tabling it due to, it's kind of linked to the SEQA. So, without the SEQA...
We can't, we can't hear it, correct?
So, that's why we're doing it. Right. So, all right. Is that clear? Any other comments on that? Look, council just clarified.
While you can't table, I believe you also could take no action. And it did seem like Derek, you couldn't come up and comment again after you talked about the initial study, and then you directed staff on several items to look at, when actually, please look at the entire record of what people have submitted already. And I think if you had as much time to read everything as the public, or actually, I would call myself a affected party, as is in the contract. We've been going over this and over this a long, long time. And you can't go forward with the rezoning unless you approve the initial study. And the contract with SHN says that they can do two public meetings without further payment. That's part of the contract. So, by redirecting staff to work with them forward, you've just upped the cost of this project. I believe if Mr. Mines is willing to take on the cost of that, by pursuing his proposal, he has purchased a, you know, you look in the records...
You're kind of giving up.
No, no. The property has marginal use regardless of the zoning. So, anyway, the cost associated with going forward at this time will be high. And please take a look at that. And I encourage staff to ask the applicant to consider the cost to the county.
Thank you. So, okay, one more. And this is on the topic of tabling.
I don't think it should be tabled, because not even 10% of people of Douglas City community signed against it. Hundred and fifteen on 713, that's 6.2%. That's, what kind of strength of numbers is that? If you want to talk about the county as a whole, that's 0.008% of the county signings. I don't think it should be tabled. I think it should be done with today.
Thank you. Okay, I'm bringing it back to the board. So, certainly, one thing that stood out is both sides of this issue. It's been an ongoing issue for a long time. So, I would encourage staff to, and to get this moving quickly. If you need a special PC meeting, obviously, they have to research the points that have been requested. So, it does need to have some speed to it.
Provides the comment, and will allow for...
And I realize...
The applicant has to be allowed into due process.
Correct. Right.
Can I make a motion?
Yeah. Oh, no, our motion is...
Tabled, please.
No, it's not. Are we in comment? We haven't voted on it.
I'm sorry. Supervisor Brown, yes.
There's a motion on the table. You can make a subsequent one.
Yes.
So, I'll make a subsequent motion to approve item number 3.1, Part 1, of the mitigating negative declaration.
No, it's all votes voted on. To research those three items.
I thought you said the camp for, and Lewiston County Council.
So, item 3.11 was voted on, and there was a vote for and denial of that, and for that to go back to staff with some specific instructions. The motion that's on the table is for item number 3.12, which is, the motion is to table that item, and is somewhat of necessity since item 1 was not...
We can't even vote or consider item 2 at this time, because we don't have item 1. But if you'd like to, I can make a motion to not consider it all ever again, and still look at item 1. You have to work with us here on this one. And you have to understand what we're working with legally and what we're trying to include everybody, no matter what.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to table as a result of the action number 1. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Are you opposed to 2? Okay. So, so move to table as a result of number 1. Okay. So, we apologize for any further delay to all parties involved, and we will hear this item again. All right. So... We will, before we break for lunch, we're going to do 5.1, which is the county code of cannabis events.
I have a question, Madam Chair. As much as I would like to move forward with hearing all of these items, you did state earlier that they would be heard, I believe, at 1:30 after lunch, and that people have left, and are planning on coming back at 1:30 to hear these items, possibly?
Well, I want them to do 5.2. Well, with that, to be on the safe side, we will wait for 5.1 to be heard at 1:30, with the rest of three items that we talked about.
Madam Chair, I think that's correct, because the notice looks fine, but I think the board could question for section 4.1.
Sure. So, we'll do that, because I don't want people to miss the other items that are remaining that might have left. So...
Oh, yeah?
I don't think we're going to do all of this. So, you are...
Excuse me. It would make it much easier if you would move your microphone closer to you, because we can't hear you very well.
Okay, thank you. So, earlier, some of the remaining items on the county matters agenda, we indicated we would hear them at 1:30. Some of you still may be here for those items, but I want to make sure everyone can come back to hear those last three remaining items on county matters at 1:30. Short of that, we will go into closed session before, right before lunch, and then return at 1:30 for those remaining items. With that, I will start reading the closed session items that we will be able to address shortly. All right, 6.1, Government Code Section 54954.5, pending litigation, number of cases, one, Trinity Action Association, Inc. versus County of Trinity, Trinity County Superior Court, Number 19CV001. Item 6.2, Government Section 54954.5, Public Employee Evaluation, County Administrative Officer. 6.3, Government Code Section 54954.5, Public Employee Evaluation, Director of Transportation. 6.4, Government Code Section 54954.5, Conference with Labor Negotiators, County Designated Representative David Prentice, Sophie Meyer, and Shelley Nelson. Employee Organization Deputy Sheriff's Association, Probation Peace Officers. Units, Skilled Trades Unit Management and Confidential Unit and General Unit. Anyone would like to comment on these items?
Kay Grace from Lewiston, I would like to know if we can be kept abreast on the cost to the taxpayer in the county for the lawsuit against us for the Trinity County Action Associated, Inc., or whatever they're called. If we could have, you know, just ballpark figures as we go along, how much is this costing us? Because in the backup in the contract, it's fairly vague. The hourly rate is there, but the cost of everything else is pretty vague. So, it would be nice if we would know how much we're on the hook for. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Justin Hawkins, Hayfork. I just want to make a comment about 6.1 also, the TA lawsuit. I know there's possible settlement talks, and there's a lot of back channels conversations going on, is my understanding, but I want to encourage the board to have some backbone and actually defend the license holders and our program vigorously. Seems like, I'm afraid it's going to be a little milquetoast on our approach from the county. And I just really think that if we're going to have a successful program, we need to actually back this up effectively. And I just frankly worry about the ability of our county to actually do such a thing. You know, I see the constant calls of the planning staff, and nothing against the director, but I think that they're just frankly overwhelmed. And this doesn't bode well when this is like a serious situation, because I don't really, I mean, I've read the complaints from TA and so forth. I think there's no doubt that this is not an attempt to bring order to the situation, but rather to actually strangle the situation right now. And that is the attempt, and we have to fight that if we're going to have any successful future economically in this county. We've got to. And while there's only, it seems like less and less people that are actually able to make the hurdles to get through this process, I think the board, the planning commission, there you go, they've had meetings till 11 o'clock at night on this matter, on the cannabis situation. Everybody's put in a lot of effort, and I think that everybody feels disappointed in this situation. I can personally say that. And apparently, the people from TA, you know, this group of local residents supposedly, they probably feel a little bit disappointed too with the process. I can't blame them, but that's usually the sign of a good deal, right? And I'd just like to mention also that, by and large, I can't speak for all the cultivators, but we tend, we have tried to work within the process. Previously, cultivators were excluded from the political process until this, 2015, right? And part of that is the leadership of this county squashed any attempt to have any say in the matter. If the cultivator's been coming forward in an attempt to actually work through the process properly, and while I think that there's plenty of reasons to sue, no one has chosen to don't do so. And that's because of internal dialogue. I don't really understand the motives of TA, other than they're looking to squash the program. They want to strangle it right now, and we need to defend this vigorously. Thank you.
Do you want to give a piece for it? I would like to second what Justin said. This is an extremely important issue. I have not read the complaint nearly as thoroughly as Justin is, I'm totally sure. But as somebody who's spent probably close to two years in negotiations with TAA in the ordinance development program, I feel that they are acting from a position of prohibitionist attitude in an attempt to get rid of this. And I'm not even certain... And I'm not even certain that they understand how the state law works. I can say for certain they don't understand how the county program works. There's abject errors in their statements continuously. And I would like to see, you know, when the board gets something, there's always like action, no action, deny, those three types of things. I'd like to consider what it would look like to eradicate this program, draw down that fund, bye-bye enforcement, bye-bye kids in school. I'm in Rotary, I'm also a fair director. Bye-bye Rotary, bye-bye fair. You know, it's over. And it's not, it's over financially, it's also over personally. Probably lose my house unless I just go rogue. And I would guarantee you that that would be the main avenue of... That would be what would happen if this program falls out. If you think we've seen problems in the past, just give this a shot, see what happens next. Even as we stand now, donations in aid for it are just going through the floor because we're all struggling financially. And then those are people who are in the program, you know? Cost me $12,000 a year once the state comes in line here just for my licensing fees. And to be held back, and I'm doing development on my property. I'm going to be paying more in property tax next year than I am right now if this program goes through. If it isn't, I'm canceling my building projects and I will not be paying more. And in fact, I'll be going back to the assessor's office and asking them to revisit the value of my property just purchased at peak value. I guarantee you, it's not worth anywhere near what the assessment is. And that $900,000 a couple of years ago that showed up in the general fund and it was like, wow, we got more money. I think that largely came from property taxes. Where else would it have come from? And we will lose that. We'll lose our citizens, we'll lose our families. We need a vigorous defense. And some of us have been in this room for four years now. I know some of the folks from Douglas City are saying it's just taken a long time for them. I'm four years in. I've been here almost every meeting. Every meeting I'm good up at the Hill. Every meeting I don't have a Rotary obligation. I'm here. I'm part of this community, and I'm going to fight for my ground. And I don't know where to take it beyond this room or possibly the courthouse. But that's where we stand. This is a real issue, and I don't understand the trifling YTA's part. If they have environmental objection, well, let's work out CUPs for every other agricultural product in this county.
Try and follow that.
Okay, good remains of the morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Tom Belenka, Douglas City. Why not continue the trend? I do that a little bit more, and I'm speaking as a member of the public here, not as a colleague, a fellow participant in this lawsuit and his cultivating license. Based on their latest public filings, we know why TAA filed this lawsuit. Because they met with representatives of the county with a list of things they wanted done, some of which had to do with sequel, some of which did not. They said, kind of like what, you know, sometimes happens in the trash business in New Jersey. Either you do this or else. They or else says, we're going to sue you on sequel. And, you know, you know better than we do. I don't know what was on that 16-point list. I'm sure in closed session, you know. I'll get it and discover, don't worry. I'll venture what was on that list, so will everybody. But it wasn't brought forth at this microphone like all the things we asked for were brought forth here with public support and whatnot. You'll see when you get the list that's been updated, there's a new item, 17. I don't know exactly what that is, but I know it's presented by TAA, but I know it's PUD directly. So you can evaluate that too and figure out who this TAA is. And as you debate what's going on and how the county should respond, I want you to contrast what you saw today versus this TAA lawsuit. Today, members of the community say, I am so-and-so, I live here. This potential use threat is me because of this. It's very specific, it listed personally. I may not agree with those things, but that is the way claims are made. TAA says, well, this is just bad. Or what's bad? It is bad. You should know it's bad. It's obviously bad. Who's bad? Everybody who's doing... They don't say Adrian is polluting my stream that I get my drinking water from. They don't say Tom Belenka's odor I can smell down in Douglas City like we saw today. It's just general and it's an impediment. So I urge the county to resist heavily. Unfortunately, it's not the best use of our licensing fees, but I know there are licensing fees there. So please spend them to keep our program alive. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? All right, we will move to a brief closed session. We won't get through all the items.
Do you want to read one?
Yeah. We'll take the shortest, quickest one. Okay, welcome back. Thank you for your flexibility while we jumbled some things this morning. Resuming the afternoon agenda, 5.1, waive the reading of and enact the ordinance which creates the Trinity County Code Section 5.2.5 regarding cannabis events, unknown fiscal impact. This is the second reading of this ordinance. Don't believe we had any changes, so supervisor Brown, any other comments?
No additions to what we had last time.
Staff, Rick, no?
No.
Board members?
Yes. Just a clarification for, probably from counsel. Section 2 of the permit required, it says, anyone who desires to hold a public event that allows sales and/or consumption. You read it, it's absolutely obvious, but it doesn't tell you consumption or sales of what? But if you put the rest of it, it's right there.
In general, it's in a section that's titled cannabis.
Just want to make sure. It's okay, good, okay. It'll fly.
If there were multiple, if this were a proposal for sale of types of products, alcohol and/or marijuana, it would require...
Just want to make sure my readers cover it. Here's another one. Thank you.
All right, any other questions? No? Members of the public wish to speak to this item? No, all right, I'll bring it back to the board.
Would you like a motion to approve as presented?
I would.
I am so moved. I've got one.
Okay, and a motion and a second.
Superintendent Brown?
Aye.
Superintendent Brown?
Yes.
Superintendent Brown?
Aye.
Superintendent Moore?
Aye.
Yes. All right, thank you. All right, moving on to 5.2. Discuss and/or take action regarding the creation of a food bank coordinator position and a county fiscal impact is dependent upon the action the board takes, approximate cost of salary and benefits for food bank coordinator per month. And the salary requested by the Trinity County Food Outreach is $90,717. So...
Can I get a clarification on that? Is that $90,000 a month, a million dollars a year? Or is that $90,000 a year?
I'm assuming a year.
A year, okay. All right, apply for it, it's $90,000 a month. This was brought to us on request of Supervisor Finley to make it a regular counter item so we can have discussion regarding this item. So I believe that Mr. Nixon is here and we'd like to let him go ahead and start.
Just for my clarification, I know when this was briefly discussed a couple of months ago, late fall, we asked for it to be looked in the county budget process, which we don't really look at the budget until September, so...
Correct.
Okay, I'm remembering that.
At this point, it would be, at this point, we haven't started. We haven't completed our mid-year, but we haven't started our 1920 budget process. So if we were to do something here, we'd have to go back and see where we could find funds from a department that maybe not spending, not anticipate to spend an entire allocation.
Well, I was planning on it in September, but anyway. Okay, we're here and we have some updates, I assume, but... Connor, you have some information you'd like to share?
Just a little bit, please. First of all, my name is Connor Nixon. I work with the Trinity Food Outreach. First of all, I need to make some corrections to the agenda items in the CAO summary. The cost and benefits for the proposed position is not $90,717. This position, if adopted, is partially subsidized by USDA to the tune of one-third of the take-home salary, which brings the actual cost down to $75,946. Likewise, the monthly costs are not $4,783, but are $3,616 because of the subsidy. In the summary, it stated that the county gives the building to the food bank free of charge. That is not true. The food bank pays rent to the county for that building, $600 a year. It is... Finally, the vehicles that is stated there were from the county is not correct. Those vehicles were given by USDA to the county.
Actually, they were given to Health and Services.
That's fine. But they were not the cost as is stated in the summary of the county. While the insurance, yes, is covered by the county, its fleet insurance, a very minor expenditure for the whole county's budget to the food bank. Those are the corrections to the agenda. Today, we're asking you to create a county position for the Trinity County Food Bank Managers. We have completed and given to each board supervisor a packet of information that encompasses a rural Northern California county salary and wage serving. Also a job description. Also the classification, where this job would fit into the county payroll. And other assorted items that you'd have had in your hand for over a month and a half. Critical questions have been asked, such as are any other county supplying a food, funds for a food bank manager? There are over 50-some counties. I have not had time to survey them all. But there are many counties and cities in California that financially support their food banks. The second critical question asked is can we afford such a position? This month, the board filled two positions in the tax collector's office. Last year, the board filled a grant writer's position. Just today's newspaper, the board has filled a position in the sheriff's office. A month or so ago, this board gave itself 40% wage increase in one fell swoop. If you can afford these positions and increases, then surely we can afford a subsidized position for the food bank.
Amen.
We... Please, please. Everybody's going to get a chance to talk, please. We know you can afford it. I am not against any of the fundings nor the increase in your salary. But you can afford to help the struggle to feed the hungry in our county, the poorest county in the state of California for median household income. And please, please, sir, never again attempt to pit the food bank against the sheriff's office. We won't tolerate that. We know the county can afford. This May, the current income for the food bank manager will decrease by two-thirds. From that time forward, the manager working full-time would be paid $6.20 an hour without any benefits. In the last two years, we have, two and a half years, we have increased the amount of food coming into the county for those in need threefold. We have also, because of the incoming food, rebuilt the county food bank, which was a shambles when we got there. Not only was the building in bad shape, food was stored on the floor. Inside of the refrigerator unit, rats had access and were eating the food. We have modernized that food bank. It's a small one, but now with a 27-foot-long refrigerator freezer unit, forklifts that can work inside, shelving, we have quadrupled the space for the food. We had to do that because more food is coming in. And that's what we are dedicated to. If this continues past May, without your help, programs will be cut. Services will be cut while the manager works other part-time jobs to try and survive. We will have to stop seeking more food to feed the county. Those are need. And there will be nobody there to take in any new food because the doors will be closed while the manager is absent. We are asking you to support the creation of this position. The work is almost done for the creation of the position. We are asking you to expedite the creation of the position so as to not have a break in services for those in need. Currently, you have 295 full-time positions in this county. We are asking for only one to feed the hungry in the poorest county in this state. You are our only hope. There is no other source of income available at this late date. We will work with you any way possible. We want you to join with us and us with you in fighting hunger in this county, the county we all love. This is not a discussion solely about creating a position. This question is about the soul of our county's government. Your obligation is to look out after the health and welfare of the community, even the most poor and the most in need. We got to work together in this county to help the most vulnerable amongst us. Or are we to turn our backs and say we can't afford it when we all know we can afford it? We know you can afford to do this financially. We know we must. Supervisors, where there's a will, there's a way. There is a way. The question is, does the board have the will? Please join with us. We make a much better team than opponents.
Connor, I have a quick question for you, just clarification. You've mentioned this a few times. Your current budget, I don't know where it stands except that you say it won't go past May, it won't carry past May. So in order to get you through the next fiscal year, what kind of money for a couple of months past May do you need?
It's not that, you misunderstand.
No, I don't. I just need to know that number.
The money that subsidizes the manager's salary now comes from Trinity Food Outreach. The grants will be exhausted in May.
Okay.
There is no other source of funding available.
Okay, that's what I need to know. Thank you.
I have a couple of questions.
I'm sorry, did you see your name? Connor?
Yes, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, the board member has a couple of questions here.
How long have you been working with the county to put this together?
We started raising money a year.
How long have you been working with the county?
Four months.
To put this together? And all of a sudden, you are expecting the county to step up?
All of a sudden is four months?
It isn't government and it is Trinity County, yes.
Well, somebody needs to speed up the process then. I have been meeting with HR people. I have been meeting with your personnel people. I have been meeting with HR people, I have been meeting with your personnel people. I tried at the Board's instruction to meet with the CAO, and those were absolutely fruitless. Now, we're back to the Board.
Thank you for not answering my question.
Well, once again, I'll try. What do you expect us to do, sir?
I would expect you to start working with the county when you had this idea and this tremendous opportunity to work with the food bank and move it forward, instead of saying, "I've done all this work, I can't do it anymore, take it over." Here's, you have to start doing it.
We're not saying we're not going to continue to work. We are saying that the funds will be exhausted in May.
And instead of moving forward, you want the county to take this over? You want, you want the county to run this? The county doesn't run much of anything very well, I'm really shocked that you would want this.
Well, that's not my fault.
It is.
It's not my fault that the county does not operate the way you wish it does.
No, he still didn't answer my question.
I don't, I don't think there is an answer to the question, sir.
Can you pass these to the Board members? I'd ask you to wait to open these, and my closing statement, I'd like to look and use those as reference.
My name is Jeff England, and I'm currently the Director of the Trinity County Food Bank and the Director of the Trinity Community Food Outreach. Our food bank was established in nineteen-seventy-five. When I assumed the position as a food bank manager, my salary was sufficient. As soon as I took over, we were offered the senior boxes, which is a subsidy for seniors sixty years and older, and that put a burden on me as far as having to go to Redding to pick up the boxes, to bring them back, distribute them, I'm having to use excess trucks, extra trucks to go to my sites because I can't hold everything in one truck. A little bit about the expansion, we did put a large refrigerator and freezer unit. I'm really glad because the USDA has given trade mitigation items such as milk. We've got five-hundred-and-forty half-gallons of milk now that we would have not had room to put those items in. We're getting frozen meat, we're getting all kinds of stuff through the trade mitigations. And I'm not going to continue on too much because Connor pretty much covered that. We just received a grant from the state through the federal government for a hundred and one thousand dollars that was distributed equally between every county in the United States, or in California. And unlike normal grants, LA County gets a lion's share, Trinity County gets a kibble. We receive the exact same amount. We're building an ADA bathroom on the facility. Right now, we're using a Porta-John and a hand-washing station which freezes in the wintertime, we can't use it. We haven't had running water since the building was built in the '40s, so we're gonna put hot, cold running water. Putting an emergency food pantry, rain gutters, and a refrigerated truck, a two-thousand-seventeen Azuzu box truck. Talking about the senior boxes, I know you're familiar, but right now, our current, our clients are basically forty percent are seniors. And a lot of those seniors are taking care of their grandkids because of our problems we've had in the county with drug addiction and everything else. We have forty percent seniors, thirty-five percent low-income families, twenty-three percent individuals, and I'm guessing around two percent homeless. We don't have a lot of homeless. But a lot of people, when I bring up the food bank, they're thinking that we're just giving money or food to the druggies, to people that don't want to work. But it's these forty percent of seniors that really, the, the senior brown boxes have been huge for them. I mean, you can see in the first picture, that's what they get every month besides commodities, and it's huge. If I was giving a full-time county, a county position, am I on the queue limit?
I'll give you a few more.
Okay. If I was giving a full-time county position, that would give me extra time to get more resources into our clients, more food I can get. We're working on a program right now with the HRN and Department of Health and Human Services on starting a backpack program for children that are low-income where they can fill the backpack up with food on Fridays to bring home that where we have a little food for the weekend. Our budget, going back to my pay, our budget is forty-one thousand three hundred and thirty-nine dollars for the Trinity County Food Bank. It's the very lowest in the state. I think to close this one is Lassen County, and they get forty-four. Out of that, I pay myself. We have Assistant Director who works part-time, an accountant, a webmaster, and a CFO, along with electricity, phones, forklift repairs, truck repairs, tires for the vehicles. I mean, basically everything, we pay for everything, and thank goodness we are getting briefly insurance from the county, which we appreciate. If you want to go to the pictures now, the first one is the senior brown box, which seniors get every month, and then they get the box for me, and then they go get their commodities also. The second picture is commodities and the Feeding America items. I added some of the items that we get from Feed America. Every month, it's a little bit different, we get different stuff, but that's basically a consensus of the stuff that we get. And also, when we get our Feed America load, we come back here with three or four pallets of free food that the soup kitchens and food pantries, the Golden Age Center, and the senior nutrition lunch programs, it's all divided up equally and they get those for free. Number, picture number three is everything a senior gets. That's the commodities, the extra items from Feed America, and the senior brown box, which is huge. Now, number four, if I have to cut a couple of programs, that's what the seniors and that's what everybody else will get. And I ask you, the hardest hit is the seniors, and they're the most vulnerable. They can't go out there and cut firewood, they can't get an extra job, and I really appreciate if we can continue with what we've accomplished and help feed Trinity County's hungry.
Marlene Elliott, also known as Redbud, from Douglas City. I know you all care about the hungry, the seniors who are hungry, the poor that are hungry. I know that you really want something to happen for this program to continue. So, if you are weary about having an employee of the county to do this, the alternative would be for your general fund to fund the Trinity Community Food Outreach Corporation, and Jeff would work as their employee. And that way, you guys would supplement his income, and so he and his wife can live above the poverty level, which I know they've been living with for many, many years. So, as an alternative, if you feel too uncomfortable about having an employee, then try to fund his employment through the Community Outfood Outreach Program. And I hope that is an alternative that will work for you if you decide that you don't want to have another employee. That would be, of course, the first option. Bear with me, I have a kind of cold. I'm in front of you to support the food bank manager. My name's Barbara Clement, and I'm from Big Bar, I'm sorry. I'm in front of you to support the food bank manager that will no longer be funded in the near future and have a county-funded and full-time position. Jeffrey England has done a full-time job plus without pay for years. Jeffrey is an important and essential part of the Trinity County and our community. He wears multiple hats without adequate compensation for his job and duties that he provides. He travels all over the county, even in horrendous weather, when most of us are sitting in warm places to provide food for the less fortunate seniors and many families we all know. Jeffrey is in process of starting a food program for children that could possibly be eating nothing during the weekend except for what is provided through the program, No Child Goes Hungry. The commodity is senior boxes and soon-to-be No Child Goes Hungry Weekend Program, and all of the other responsibilities Jeffrey provides for the county could possibly not continue with the small paycheck that Jeffrey is allowed. Jeffrey should not have to rely on grants and donations only to make a living to provide for his family. Jeffrey's paycheck right now for the food, with the food bank, is below poverty level. The Board of Supervisors of Trinity County need to step up and approve a full-time food bank position funded by the county. This is a man and a job that Trinity County cannot go without. Each and every one of us could be just a few paychecks away from needing what Jeffrey needs, that Jeffrey provides for Trinity County. One day, you might be picking up a senior box or commodities from Jeffrey to help feed yourself or your family. Sometimes, we turn a blind eye to people or situations we don't relate to or acknowledge. But hunger is real in Trinity County, and it is not going away anytime soon. Please give Jeffrey what he deserves, a county-funded position with county-funded paycheck. Thank you.
Good afternoon, my name is Lisa Weiner, I'm a Trinity County resident, and for the past six months, I've been conducting graduate-level research on food insecurity with Humboldt State University, and I wanted to share a little bit about what I've learned about food insecurity, food insecurity that came here today. Hopefully, some of it will be new information. First, food insecurity or hunger is a leading health and nutrition issue in the nation. It is associated with myriad adverse health outcomes, including decreased cognitive function, obesity, depression, high blood pressure, diabetes, negative behaviors in children, specifically rural children, poor education outcomes, and higher levels of chronic disease. Specifically for seniors and older adults, food insecurity is associated with malnutrition, frailty, anemia, disability, decreased bone mass, immune dysfunction, decreased quality of life, depression, limitations of daily living or less independence, having to choose between spending money on food or medication, which is absolutely horrible. Food insecurity, the food insecurity status of seniors is also less likely to change than for any other demographic. So, after learning all of this, I was able to see how hunger in the United States, the United States, costs around a hundred and sixty billion dollars a year in healthcare expenditures. And the average food insecure individual spends about two thousand dollars more a year on healthcare than somebody who is not food insecure. As you can guess, rural communities fare worse than their suburban counterparts. One in seven rural households is food insecure. A quarter of those are persistently food insecure. Trinity County schools have high grades of student eligibility for free and reduced breakfast and lunch, which is an indicator of the food insecurity issue in our county more generally. Now, to me, this means that consumers of food assistance programs like the food bank are not individuals living on the margins of our society or our county. These are our neighbors, these are our community members. One in seven households, on average, in rural communities. One of the most available and effective ways to address food insecurity is to increase participation in food assistance programs like the food bank. Food assistance programs have been shown to reduce the prevalence of food insecurity. It frees up personal funds that can be used for other purposes, which has contributed, on average, sixty-two billion dollars annually in gross product. Food assistance programs like the food bank are absolutely critical to the health and well-being of Trinity County residents.
Oh, my God.
Richard Cole, Lewiston, also representing indivisible Trinity County. The most important function of any government is to take care of the health and safety of its residents, period. That's why governments are established. I can't think of any higher need than the need to eat. Needy families in this county had far fewer resources than what this gentleman behind me has been able to provide in the last couple of years. Please do not put Jeff in the position of having to choose between the needy families of Trinity County and his own family. That's not fair, and it's not good for us.
Good afternoon, my name is Elaine Klaczka, and I am the team leader over at the Trinity Congregation Church. I have the food cupboard over there every Wednesday from ten to eleven-thirty. And this morning, we served a hundred and twenty-seven people. It's becoming more and more people. The rents, we all know the difficulties. Low pay, poor housing that we have available. I know you're working on affordable housing right now, I'm on that committee too. I know there's stuff in the works, and I'm very happy about there being more housing available. But what I really came up here to say is that I was holding this little two-week-old baby this morning while Mom went through the kitchen, getting her canned goods and bread provided by Holiday Food Market, getting the cereal that the food commodities provide extra for us through Jeff. We have a food giveaway next Saturday, and we're so grateful for that because without that, we're gonna have to give less and less food. This mother had no other access for food. She was in dire straits, and we were so happy and grateful that we could give it to her. And please, I would like to extend Jeremy, and John, Judy, Keith, Bobby, all of you, please, on Wednesday mornings at ten o'clock, if you have the time, just come, come and see, sit down and talk with the people, just talk to them. And then they can tell you what it's like and what they're going through and what their needs are. And we can stand up here and tell you how it is, but when you sit down with those folks and you hear their story and what they're going through, it can't help but touch you. And so, I would appreciate anything you could do. I do understand how the wheels turn slowly, I do understand that. I'm not, I don't understand the workings of high finance and governments and all that. But what I do understand is holding that little two-week-old baby who's definitely undernourished. And we also have the opportunity to provide referral services for people. We see their needs, and we refer them on to areas that we can help them with. So, thank you for listening to us, to me, and I hope there's something that you can do. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Justin Hawkins, Hefor. So, I heard some mention about funding a position out of the general fund, and I'm too not an expert in the high finance of government. But it does seem like that there's a lot of money probably coming from the cannabis program in different ways. And instead of just having the money jump, just be dumped probably back in the general fund and be fungible, it would be nice to have things allocated specifically lined out. And this would be a great opportunity, like, this, I think, is a worthy subject for consideration and that sort of thing. I appreciate the time, thank you.
I agree with you.
I agree with you. May I?
You may, please stick your name.
Billy Muldoon, Assistant Director at the Trinity County Food Bank. You know, I, I know you all love Trinity County. Otherwise you wouldn't be here in front of me. Am I right? This is an unpolished gem and we're here to polish it. That's what I love about Trinity County. I've been in here in meetings. I tried to breathe life into this community several times through skateboarding, a skateboard park. I had to gavel, yes, this and that, doesn't matter. Me and Jeff, Jeff and I, he's a skipper, I'm Gilligan, we, you don't know how much snow we go through. You don't, you have not seen what we do. If you all, do it, do we have any pictures of the snow? No? Okay. Well, anyway, we're here to polish this gem called Trinity County and we love it. That's why we're here. And please give us the opportunity to keep doing that because, yes, yeah, we're, we're not, we're not feeding, we're feeding kids, we're feeding old people, we're feeding everybody and it's important. I'm poor, you know? I work at Round Table Pizza at nights and I work here during the days and I'm just trying to, I'm a dog trying to get a freaking bone here and I need you guys to cooperate with our system and our program. Otherwise, we're not gonna shine. We are a satellite of California. California is a satellite to everybody, all states, in the whole country. We need to be that satellite. So also, and this is from FDR, the test, the test of our progress is not whether we add more to our abundance of those who have, to those who have much, it's whether we provide enough to those who have too little. Do you smell what I'm stepping in?
Hey Graves from Lewiston. Full disclosure, my three kids, we homeschool. We are, I think, $8.90 above the poverty level. So I'm not belittling what the poverty level is. I'm just saying that to live within your means. And for the elderly people, there's more needs for them than just food. If you're living in Trinity County, born and raised Trinity County, grandparents were minors, if you're gonna live here in Trinity County, there's some self, you have to take some of it on yourself. If, and you can't just pick up and move sometimes, I get that. But there's a lot of things that you need to do for yourself and that you need to do for your neighbors and that doesn't mean handing it over to the government. We all know that if you took a million dollars, oh, we'll say $100,000, and you gave it to a group to work with, that they would get more accomplished with it than if you had a government employee and a bureaucracy and then you add employees, because you're gonna need employees because you can't just hire one person, then you're gonna have a department and then you're gonna have people that come up and go, hey, you did it for these guys, now you have to do it for us. And I'm not trying to knock the good work of people. There's people all over this county who devote decades to volunteering in their own money and their own time and they do a good job and they're all worthy causes. But I'm saying that to do it this way, are you gonna fly the job if you do it? Because is that even legal, just to hire someone from a private organization and make them be an employee? I'm not even sure if that's legal. I'm pretty sure you'd have to fly the job. The other thing is, you guys do have more people in your grant department. Maybe there's other ways that you can help volunteers access more money through grants. You guys have grant writers, maybe you guys have different ways, you go to CSAC and all these national things, maybe you have avenues to help generate money for them and still let them continue it on their own. Because I don't think they're gonna like it when you have whoever you end up hiring for this, if you do this, come down with how they're gonna run it. It's probably not gonna go the way they think. So I'm just suggesting that you could find another avenue to help them generate funds or raise money or, and other worthy causes too. You know, you guys have grant writers. They can keep an eye out for what's out there and see what we need in this community and maybe, you know, see a need, fill a need and we might already have those things in place. Thank you. Sir, anybody else?
Hello. My name is Terry Loretz and I live in Trinity Center. And I guess I'm kind of representing minors from Trinity Center, Coffee Creek. I volunteer at the Coffee Creek Food Bank. So I get to see firsthand what this food does for our community and it's huge. I'm sure it's the same in a lot of places, but especially in our community, we're not talking about people that don't want to work. I mean, we don't have jobs in a lot of our time. So, you know, everybody is seasonal. We have a lot of seniors, a lot of seniors, and it's just very great for them. I moved here from San Diego six years ago and I also get involved in the scholarship programs. Your guys' scholarship program blows my mind. Being from San Diego, we don't, we don't get that kind of stuff. You guys are so supportive of your people and your kids and, and just the county. And it's awesome. A lot of it blows my mind. And so I just say, you know, let's not drop the ball and let's help Jeff out. I don't, if we lose Jeff, I mean, it's all gonna go away because, I mean, no one's gonna do what he does. I know that. So that's it for me. Thank you.
Hey, anybody else? I'm Hallie Combs, Thomas Saito. Bring it back for members to have questions. Richard, Richard, do you have questions, comments? How would you guys like to do this?
Whatever you want. If I have an introduction, if Richard wants to go first?
Well, I'll go ahead and go first and I, I don't think there's a member up here, including myself, that doesn't understand or doesn't feel that there is a need. In my past life, this is what I did for a living. I administered over $120,000 a year to local food banks through EFSP. We also administered to local food banks through CSBG. I was a psychologist on the streets that dealt with the homeless and would go into the homeless camps and deliver food. So I understand the plight and I understand the necessity. That's not what we're asking for here. I haven't heard that we have a lack of food. What I've heard is we have a lack of funding for a staff member. And that's where the position, that's the issue we're having here is how do we fund a position like that in a county? First of all, Ms. Graves was actually absolutely right. We would have to fly the position. We could not just hire the person who's, who's doing it right now. It would be flown. On top of that, it now becomes a county program, which means we can't collect donations. Anything over $2,000 has to come to the board every time. That would put this program to a screeching halt. I did, there are 58 counties in California. I did send out to CEOs how many have a Food Bank manager and the answer was none. Most counties do help in some way, trying to fund food banks, but they don't do it through an employee. Because once it becomes an employee, those volunteers that we have, we have to put on a worker's comp. I can't have volunteers work in the county without them having fingerprinted and going through workers' comp. So free employees cost the county quite a bit of money. On top of that, if it's a department, we have what are called A-87 charges. We're gonna be charged through personnel, we're gonna be charged through county council, we're gonna be charged through honor's office for payroll. So this $90,000 number, though you sound, you think is too much, I think it's too little because we're gonna have other charges on top of that. The issues go on with it being a county employee. If we're asking for assistance to fund the current position under the current nonprofit, yes, we do have grant writers and we do have assistants that could help that. And we did find grants and one grant was offered and partially accepted, but then the rest of the funding was turned away. The first five, the Food Bank was given $26,000. They received the first $10,000 and then left the other $16,000 on the table because refused to turn in reports. First five was also undersubscribed, so there was additional, probably $13,000. I was told there was around $40,000 on the table that would have gone to the Food Bank. Now with the $5,000 that Mr. Brown has offered, that's $45,000. There's your $43,000. So there are options out there. But the most difficult one is asking a county to make it a position. I'm not opposed to assisting. I don't think anybody else is opposed to assisting. But to make it a, to make a county position, my recommendation to the board is it won't be feasible. Now, I take my direction from the board and they say, too bad, we're going a different direction. I do what the board tells me to do, but I will make the recommendation to the board that it is not feasible to have, make it a county employee. I'll just leave it there and board can ask me questions regarding that.
I do have two quick clarifications. I know it was mentioned that we have all these positions that we're approving and I will tell you, those are already budgeted. Those aren't just something that we're dreaming up today and they were budgeted in September and that's the budget process that we have to live with. So a lot of positions go unfilled for a variety of reasons, but they're already budgeted. That's why when we gave direction to Richard to look at it for the next budget year, which we typically approve in September. The other item I wanted to clarify is the cannabis money. That cannabis money is collected on, based on fees and is only legally able to be used toward the program. Unfortunately, it can't go into the general fund pot of money that gets budgeted each year. If we had a cannabis tax, that would be a different story. The cannabis fees are collected and have a narrow purpose for that money. So I just wanna make that clear so people have a little bit better understanding. Any other board member comment, questions?
Yes. You recently? Mom?
Can you tell us what it would be used for?
What the term of use are used for?
It's to maintain the cannabis licensing program. Maintain cannabis licensing program.
Same concept if you purchase a building permit. It has to, the money, money has to be used for inspection on that building permit. Correct me if I'm wrong, Richard, the ask is about $76,000 for the rest of the year or for, would it be for from May to May of next year?
I'm not clear on what the, what the current ask is. The numbers I have is for a full-time staff for 12 months. So I'm not, I'm not familiar with the current ask is right now.
Let me interject. I mean, the ask would be to fund it to the next fiscal cycle, even though they may not know what they're at, they're asking that.
Which may be May, which may not be May. I know, you know, I'm not sure. It already seems that there is an organization in place that runs this and seems to run it pretty well. Is there a board that handles this or a group of people?
There are. Yeah, we have a, we have a Trinity County Food Bank assessor board, Trinity Food Outrage Board, but it's just a matter of all the extra work. On my part, on securing food and distributing it and paperwork and...
I understand that and that's very clear. I, what I'm trying to get at is, I don't see where this county can't come up with helping fund, if not fully funding. And I can't commit for the rest of, rest of my board member. Settle down.
I like it.
Hey.
Right.
So what I want to know, in fact, actually, Rosebud brought it up, brought it up perfectly. Everything's in place to run your organization.
Yes.
What you're looking at is general fund money to keep it going.
Exactly. Could I speak for just a second?
Just, let's get our comments. Hold your calls and I will bring them.
And as far as I'm concerned, that's not a problem. The problem is, is the additional liability and having to interview somebody and you might not be the one that's, that's accepted by the board to run it. You're better, I think you're better off the way you are now and having asked for your salary. So you're fulfilled. And that, that's, it's the same thing that Rosebud, Redbud, I'm sorry.
I was about to slip.
Yeah.
Spoiler alert for...
I'll stop there.
Who knows? If there is money available, there is a nonprofit that would run it. The question is before the board, is there money available now?
Okay, well...
We ask, I'm gonna step in and say, we did give direction to look at it for the next budget year. I mean, I think he's been trying to find short-term and long-term some portion of money.
What you're asking right now, is there money available? And the answer is no. What would have to be done is we have our budget right now. Every department is funded. Every department has a budget within. For us to go back and find the money, we don't have a reserve. Trinity County does not have a reserve. So we don't have a savings account that we can go to and say, well, we pulled $40,000 out of that. What I'd have to do is go through all general fund departments, not non-general fund, mental health, social services, those type, road department. I'd have to go to general fund department, which would mean administration, DA, probation, sheriff's department, those type of agencies. Let's see, general services, work personnel board. I'd have to go through those departments and find out, we are 60% through the year if they are, if they've spent, say 35%, I can assume, well, they're not gonna spend their entire allocation and take the money away from them. There is no savings account to say, well, we can pull it out of savings. It will come from somebody, it will come from some department. So that's sadly the truth because we don't have a reserve in Trinity County at this point. Now we're coming around to our next budget cycle. We refinanced our loan and we have that option and that's what we're gonna try and work in the next few years to have an option of having a reserve, but we don't have that luxury right now.
Supervisor, Supervisor Brown, then you.
Well, I think the last thing this organization needs to do is have us take this over. There will be less food for people. And unfortunately, funding this position as a, as a county employee would mean we take the position, we take the funding or the organization over. But I do sit on first five, there was money on the table. I don't know, we worked pretty hard to get that money out and it just didn't seem to work. I don't know if there's an ability for us to help them with an HHS employee or something to do the required work that they didn't seem to be able to do. The first five has talked about $40,000 talked around if it serves, you know, what first five needs. Guidelines. I mean, an easy one here is of course the $600 rent, you know, things like that. And I don't know if it's legal for us just to donate money to that. So we'd have to go through council or maybe you've already done that.
Yeah, we couldn't just gift public funds. We'd have to be in the same manner as a grant where we'd go into contract with them and it'd be the same situation for that to be reporting to make sure that the funding that we are giving to the organization is giving the target population in which they're saying it will. So it still would be reporting with us. And I just wanna make, I'm not opposed to assisting the Food Bank. I'm just opposed to making it a county department, a county employee. So I don't want people to think that I'm opposed to this. I just would like to take that off the table because I agree with Supervisor Groves. It's not the appropriate home for it and it would, we would have less food and it would cost twice as much. So I would like to have another option than be holding this hostage. We have to have an employee for the county. If negotiations are open to work on how we can assist the current situation, I am open to that.
The statement of less food is not correct. It is our job in Trinity Food Outrage to go get the food. And we have done so in the last two and a half years and tripled the amount of food coming to the county.
Connor, you misunderstood what I said. If we take it over, there will be less food for people in that, in the county.
Because we don't, the county does not qualify for a lot of the subsidies and grants that you do.
Because, well, of course, we have to throw another $200,000 or something, we can do that. But if we, with the same budget you have today, we take it over, there will be less food, less people served. Guarantee it, just the way the government works.
I don't understand the logic because we have operating out of the county area right now, a storefront where food is given to us from outside source. now, a storefront where food is given to us from outside sources and is distributed to the needy here.
Okay.
We want to get more food in the county by being a position. We'll not restrict the food coming into the county. In fact, it will enhance the food.
I think there's, there's a point being missed here. We don't, can't go into, we can go offline and explain it a little bit more later, but Supervisor Penley, you had a comment?
Uh, just a, I'll, I'll ask for county council. Can we accept donations of food?
It's not food.
For, for, for any reason, just, just to feed our, our, uh, our police department, our sheriff's department, anything like that?
In, in general, uh, up to a certain amount, yes.
Right.
If you start to surpass, and I believe, uh, that the CAO is correct, that it's a two thousand dollar maximum. Um, and that is, if the same sources are providing it, that's actually a two thousand dollars, not just on one day, but it's a streaming number. So if you're receiving it from one grocery store and it surpasses the two thousand dollars in a, in a fiscal year, that's, that's a good one. Um, the, the other issue, um, and I, I think was also discussed is if the county took this over, the volunteers would then become county volunteers, which there, there is a cost to that.
Supervisor Chen, I got one.
Yeah, I kind of got lost in some of the things that I was going to say. I wanted to piggyback off of what you had said, uh, earlier, that not only were these things budgeted for the budget year, but just as today, um, we had, we approved, um, additional tech in, in administration, but it comes within their budget and then that's federally and state funded. It's not even coming from the general fund. So those sources for those people are not from the general fund. It would take more than three of our, just so you have it clear, um, three of our salaries for the year for your one position. And so, you know, you want to bring up that we passed a raise after eighteen years of not having a raise. I think that the whole picture needs to be pointed out. CAO has met with you and I think after watching the back and forth today, I understand you don't think it's fruitful because you're not getting what you hear, what you want, where the gentleman has been trying to be very, um, clear that if this goes to the government to take over, chances are the best person for the job won't get the job because that's not how government works. We want Jeffrey. You asked me to do a letter of support last May. I did. It went to first five. They got the money and now I'm finding out it wasn't even utilized. Don't ask the, well, that's what I'm hearing.
I'm sorry, that's not true. First five gave us ten thousand dollars to bring it here to the board. It was clearly stated in the grant that we were use that money to subsidize his salary for one year while we took it to the county for a position that was written in the grant.
Well, so that's what you're saying now and it's not fruitful.
No, that's what happened.
Excuse me, sir. The CAO, Supervisor Groves, and I talked to Susie Ketchups. And by the way, she is our grant person who has more than paid for her way already. So we all believe in Jeffrey. We all believe that what he's doing is awesome. We all want this program to continue. We do want to work with you, but what we don't want is to be told that we're not having, um, a fruitful conversation because you're not hearing what is being said. What, what is being said is there was money on the table and we didn't utilize it. That's not a good thing.
That's not correct.
We have mid, we have mid, we have mid-year budgets coming up. Can I be taken a look at them? No. Mid-year budget is coming up for February, March.
Oh, no, wait, it is February. Yeah, it'll be, uh, I think it's mid-March, mid to late March, uh, probably the nineteenth of March, is that what we're looking at? Yeah, it'll be around nineteenth of March.
And I, I'm not even sure how, how you, we can just, you need to figure out how we can just give a certain amount of money to an organization. Obviously you can't donate it. Do we need to form?
I, I believe because of.
Of food?
Well, I, I believe because they are the only food bank, you could do a single source R and P.
Okay.
So I think that that's a workaround. We could do, because not other, they don't have other food banks in the area as, as most other counties have multiple food banks. Um, they are, I believe, the only food bank, so we can do a single source R and P. If that's what's choosing.
Well, I would like a little bit more information, um, in terms of, a little bit more detailed information, I should say, and where, uh, the first five money can be brought back into, into play here. I mean, that's a chunk of money. I don't, I don't know if first five, maybe it's too late for first five, but it's disappointing to hear it didn't get used right or only half of it. So we can start there, of money that was already allocated for them. And I know we gave you, um, I think it's, this meeting is actually premature because you were still digging, looking for extra money to help them in the, the short term.
Well, at, at this point, um, I haven't been looking for any more grants because I've essentially told, we don't want a grant. So I haven't been looking for more grants.
Supervisor Brown?
Well.
Oh, yes, you did.
No, you did not.
Yes. You said you would like the county to fund it. You, and we, and, and you know that you received twenty-six thousand dollars from first five.
No, I did not.
Yes.
Ten thousand.
You received ten thousand in cash, but allotment was twenty-six thousand dollars. You turned back to sixteen because you did not complete.
You got this totally wrong.
Okay.
I wrote those grants.
I, yes.
I know what we're talking about. That is wrong.
I'm, I'm not going to do it at this point. Thank you.
Okay.
Supervisor. So as, as I am a representative on first five, there's more money available and, and so the question is, is that we are representative, and I forget her name right now, not Susie, no, Susie's somebody up to do the paperwork to see if this could qualify in the future. Worked hard to try to come up with forms and it just didn't seem to be as doable. So I think a really important part for this, to get this money, which is sitting there, is for somebody in your organization and maybe Richard or whatever to sit down and Susie to figure out what is a doable way to keep track of this data. There was, you asked for twenty-six thousand, there was ten thousand given in the, in the process that you had to then show that that money qualified under first five and the paperwork was not done. And so the sixteen thousand was set there and moved on. That money is available. And, and Susie had thought that at some point it would go up to forty thousand, but again, these have to be things that serve, you know, it has to show serving young children. So that's an, an obvious place that if there's a misunderstanding of how that was supposed to work, that's, that's fine. That's, that's an easy fix. But with any of these things, there's going to be a lot of paperwork and time spent getting money from the government. So I, I think that should be our first focus is to get that re-engaged, um, there, coming up with grants and using our resources as grants writers, I think is a huge benefit. Coming up with, you know, short-term money to keep them afloat, I am not opposed to.
So may I ask a question of Connor? He says, we seem to have differences of opinions after we leave the room. So you're saying if we find a grant, you would accept a grant and do the paperwork required to maintain that grant?
The paperwork that was requested by first five to get additional information proved to be absolutely physically impossible for the food pantries to do. They wanted each food pantry to do what was a, to be a snapshot and interview everybody that came through that food pantry that day and have them fill out a form. As you've heard from the congressional church person, they did a hundred and twenty-some-odd people in two hours. Lewiston did sixty-two in an hour and a half. The format that they laid out was physically impossible for the food pantries to do that. And I told them that and I tried to work with them to condense that form and they didn't.
Well, so we're back to, if there's a will, there's a way.
That's right. If they will come, I offered them to please put your representatives, hire a person to sit down, three people, to interview the people as they come in. We only have a few volunteers running these food pantries. We don't have extras. Not ask them. Ask the food pantries, could they have done that?
For forty thousand dollars?
Huh?
If you've done that for forty thousand.
We can't physically do it.
Sixteen different sites do.
We can't physically do that.
An example, this food for folks usually only has two or three people that are at high pomp to work, so they don't, and they're working food.
Yeah. And high pomp does not participate because of their distance much with us. But a hundred and twenty in two hours to be interviewed, where do we get the personnel to do that?
So, Richard, could you, go ahead.
From my understanding is they were willing to work with the folks to have self-reporting. So while they were, while they were there eating, they could have filled out the paperwork. It wasn't, it wasn't going to be the required, or why they were, before they left the, the property, they could do a self-reporting on it. So, um, first five, I got a letter here from first five saying that they did work to try and, uh, to streamline the process. But again, my question would be then, if we can find grants, are you willing to work within the grants?
Yes.
Okay.
We, you and I sat down and spoke about this. You said to me that yes, we don't want this to be a county employee, but yes, we have funds. And I said that we need them renewable for three years so that we can stabilize a food bank. And you said, yes. But I went out then and had told you to get nonprofits together, the head of the hospital, the head of HRN and directors of that to meet. And you knew the time of the meeting and the date of the meeting because you had helped set those dates and you did not show up at that meeting. And when I came back to your office to ask, why weren't you at that meeting with all of the folks aware that Dwayne was there, others were there? You said, I can't, I didn't mean what I said.
You took, when I said the county would support. The county would support your, your efforts. You took it as the county will fund your efforts. I said the county would support it. That's.
So why don't we all go back to the drawing board and then, um, go back to first five and maybe they can rework their form, sit down, have Connor in the room, of course, and Jeffrey to see that they can accommodate what is needed with the net grant. That's the lowest hanging bucket of fruits that I know of.
Susie, into the next two.
Yes.
I'd also like to see you start doing the work to pull whatever funding is not being used in, in the different departments and see if we can look at it in mid-year.
Yeah, I can report that in mid-year. What we do, yeah, we go through and we, and people, and each department will have its projections as to where, how much funding they have and how much funding, how much time is left of the year. So we, and we go through it. Fifty percent of the year, we have forty-six percent of our budget left, so I can do that. Yes.
And I also have a comment that I don't want an answer to. Just want to make it very clear that, uh, Richard works for the Board of Supervisors in the county. He doesn't take direction from anyone else.
Yeah. And also, of course, we have the five thousand, Supervisor Brown.
The five thousand has been given and receipt was issued and, um, I'm very happy that you guys are putting in all the time you put in dedication and, um, don't let this conversation get in the way that we all value the service you are providing. Um, you know, the, the details and the paperwork and all that can make any situation uncomfortable and nasty. So, uh, everyone should stay focused on the, the accomplishments and the, um, goals ahead.
Thank you.
Can I say something? This is my position and it's trying to be funded. Just one little quick.
Okay, I'll let you, Jeffrey, but I'm being very lax in this meeting, which I shouldn't be. Because we don't run meetings like this.
And what Mr. Penley said.
And watch that whole group.
I am more than happy, I don't, at the county position is not what's, it's, it's just the funding, so I have a limiting wage. That's all I ask for. If it has to do with grants or whatever is needed, I'm fine with that. And in fact, it would probably create more work for me if I was a county employee because I have to report and everything else. I understand that. But if there's a way to get funding through grants or whatever, uh, we can make it happen.
Can I ask one question of Mr. Connor? Can I get a member of what you're looking for between now and July first?
Till July first? We are looking for an additional two thousand dollars a month, May, June.
Plus three sixty.
Yeah, let, let me correct that. Two thousand three hundred and sixty dollars a month from May fifteenth, June fifteenth to July fifteenth. Now that, at the July fifteenth, then we're right up against the wall again. So it's not much, but that's just the subsistence salary that has no benefits going along other than a health plan that the corporation provides.
Thanks, Steve.
So, yeah, please revisit the first five. There seems to be some misunderstanding of requirements, perhaps. I don't know, but.
So when, I mean, at first five, I'll definitely support, you know, getting this money in, but maybe the county's going to have to offer in and come up with some labor to, in kind, in lieu of labor to help them do the paperwork over a four-month period or whatever would be adequate for first five.
If we had the people fill out those forms, we would fill out those forms, but we do not.
So I am new to the community. Okay, the, so I'm.
Tell the comment is over.
I'm just going to offer my support. So if we need some support writing these documents, I.
Work it out with him.
Okay. It's not our documents. Okay. Awesome.
Yep. And so we'll get a report and.
We're making sure that the direction of work is properly. Immediately I need to see if I can find around seven thousand dollars is what they're looking at too.
No, I'm sorry, four thousand.
Nope.
No, it was three months at, uh, twenty-three sixty, wasn't it?
May fifteenth to June fifteenth.
But he has money until, he said July fifteenth is your.
So that's forty-five days.
I'm not too sure where the July date came in.
That's our, that's our budget.
That's our, that's our budget.
His run money, last paycheck is in April fifteenth to go through May. That is to supplement what he gets from, uh, sorry, USDA. But that, that's not our goal. That's to try and get a wage established.
We understand, that's my goal, Tim.
Thank you. So around seven thousand dollars, report back in mid-year if there's, if it's eligible, if there's a department that we can, uh, surprise that from. And then work with Mr. Nixon and Susie to see if we can get first five back involved and then start seeking additional.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
My other question, do I understand they pay the county, is it six hundred a year for the rentals for, of the building?
For the four directions, we could easily.
We can just charge them a dollar a year.
And there is.
Can I go and check?
I mean, have to get approval, but that's a nice suggestion.
Would I, would we do that? Just because the county does have a vested interest in this? They recognize that, you know, we're, that's an in-kind gift of around fourteen thousand dollars.
Right.
So on top of our, our insurance and our, uh, building that comes up to another thousand. So that's an in-kind, the county already has an around fifteen thousand dollar investment in this. So we do believe in it and so much so that we're willing to support it in other manners.
The other thing, Richard, you talked about tires and maintenance on their vehicle. We do have a maintenance department that maybe could do some of that work. I mean.
We do, we also, because we let them use our.
And our tires might be cheaper than what they can go buy at Schwab's. I don't.
Yeah, we have, we have a, we have a, oh, I forgot to.
Then let's look at an MOU.
Right. So any, any in-kind that we can get is better than trying to find cash.
You can talk to Richard after, Jeffrey.
Okay, okay.
On those details. So, um, and, and he'll come back with more information.
Yeah, listen, we do have a purchase order for, for local tire shops that we get a, we get a bulk rate. Same thing is with, with fuel. I think they're receiving, they're using our motor pool and receiving, I think it's three to four cents a gallon cheaper. So, um, we, we are, we're, this isn't something we want to walk away from. It's just need to be done properly.
Okay, direction given. Um, we'll move on to the second item of the day, last item of the day. We'll move on to the second item of the day, last item of the day. Is that one? All right. So, item 5.7, waive the reading and enact an ordinance which amends trade county codes such as seventeen point four three regarding commercial cannabis cultivation regulations. Sorry, Leslie, I froze a moment, time for a moment. Okay, so we had a couple of questions and not too many amendments on this item, but you have some questions in your staff report. So, Keith, Keith and I looked at these two as part of the ad hoc, so I'll let you leave with that. Do you need a second?
I need a second. I'm sorry. Totally sidetracked.
I totally understand. So, for everybody's knowledge, the items that need some clarification are, should the thirty additional licenses remain fixed to the Trinity County Water Works District One? Number two is Phase One applicants are not defined for TPZ. Staff has proposed a warning from the urgency ordinance. And three, regarding designated area, or one reference to the term is for definition, one is for rule setting. And as soon as Keith is ready, he'll share some thoughts on those three that we discussed and the board can certainly have their opinions on.
So, so I'll start from number three and work my way back on the minor additions. My understanding is council said that no matter what we decided on these, this would not have to go back through, through the process again. So, regarding the designated area, we do talk to it, about it in the definitions, and then we do talk about it in, in a rule setting. As the ad hoc, we do agree with Leslie's recommendation that we move that all to the definitions zone, which was clear that there was one line that needed to be added into that, and that was that this is under definitions one, five. And so, it's redlined under, if you're on the website, unless otherwise approved by the planning director, which comes from the other part, and so we would remove the other part and just make this cleaner and be there. Secondly, the Phase One applicants are not defined in TPZ, and she's proposed that we use the same wording that we did in the urgency ordinance. We also agree with that because over time, we all know what Phase One was, but six hours from now, we might all forget. So, and then the, the first one is should the thirty licenses remain fixed to Trinity County Water Works District One? In the ordinance, we have recommended, we recommended that, that the five thirty remain five thirty and they just get put back into the pot countywide. We have received comments from people from Hayfork because that Hayfork's been beaten up by this process and due to kind of getting into the game late, and people from Hayfork have asked us to make those thirty additional licenses just for the Hayfork Water Works District. The ad hoc has no position on that, I think. We decided the rest of the board, we did have no problem in leaving it in Hayfork or making it countywide. Totally understanding why the people in Hayfork might like that additional time to get up to speed with all the rest of the county. So, those were the only changes that were recommended, and all, again, those were all changes that would not affect this being voted on today and before. Any questions?
Just that the thirty licenses will, making sure they will stay in that water district.
Well, that's up to, that's up to the board. We're, we're not making a recommendation one way or the other, but I totally sympathize and understand why that, that other districts might have different views of where those thirty should go.
That's something that you can do that, you can allocate permits to certain districts?
Yes.
This was, this is, Jeremy, I don't know if you recall, but these thirty were designated to Hayfork for the last year, which would give our total of five thirty, five hundred and thirty licenses. Since last meeting, of course, we lifted the Hayfork carve-out district, which makes the local Hayfork really at play. So, there was some confusion what, what would happen to those thirty additional licenses, so.
And another way that it could go is we could say those thirty are available for the Hayfork district for a time period. So, we can say six months or a year or ten years, whatever we felt, until, we have definitely lessened the regulations for the small growers in this and to benefit Hayfork. I don't know how many have taken advantage of that so far, but that is the ask out of the people that have called us in the Hayfork area to give extra time and extra benefit to the small, small farmers, especially cottage types in Hayfork.
Okay. With that, I'll open it up to the public.
Carl Fisher, Hayfork. More fun being on this side.
To prove it.
Well, obviously, I have a big concern here. To just go back a little ways, I know that a few of you sitting there are intimately familiar with the board's proclamation that marijuana cultivation is public nuisance with a long list of rareizes. And then in 2016, there's what, three of you that were at the 2016 meeting where the emergency ordinance was adopted. And in adopting that ordinance, there was two main factors to it. One was a pathway for illegal growers to become legal. The other half of that ordinance was protection of areas of high population density from the public nuisance. And so, there was a carve-out for it. And those areas of higher population density pretty much conformed with a lot of the special districts, including water districts, and Hayfork was included in that. Now, you've obviously dropped Hayfork out of that carve-out even though it is a, an area of high population density. So, what I'm seeing here on item five, V victory, you keep all of that in because all those groups of people in those high-density areas are deserving of protection by the county from the public nuisance of marijuana cultivation. You've even, in Lewiston area, you've added ground around the district because you felt it needed additional buffer from the substantial risk of public nuisance. Now, for some reason, the people who live in the high population density area of the Trinity County Water Works District One don't deserve the protection against the public nuisance. And in my mind, this is blatant discrimination against one group of people who are no different than any of the other groups of people you're protecting. And I think if it went to court, it'd be a slam dunk. It passes the, passes the tried and true test of if it looks like a duck, it walks like a duck, and it sounds like a duck, it's probably a duck. Thank you. That was a great pause before the bell, though. I appreciate it.
I wanted to quack so bad.
Good afternoon, Lisa Wright. I would like to respond to the previous speaker regarding the carve-outs. As I've maintained throughout the carve-out inclusion, that under state law that was upheld by the Supreme Court as recently as December of 2016, that any type of a carve-out that would go against the general plan and the zoning therein is on its face, a zoning ordinance would be on its face invalid. So, I'm immediately against carve-outs. The public nuisance is not from cultivation. The public nuisance that you've determined is a nuisance is supposedly around odor. We mitigate for odor within the ordinance. So, as long as you're correctly zoned, you're mitigating for odor within the ordinance, which is a three hundred and fifty-foot setback from a neighbor's house, as well as your thirty-foot setback from property, you've mitigated. That's what your obligation is, is to protect against the smell, which is claimed to be the nuisance. So, I don't think that there's any standing really to maintain these carve-outs legally. You may have community support to do that, but I don't think that it's founded on good legal arguments. Overwhelmingly as well, for this particular carve-out, the Hayfork community has supported it and asked for it, that it be removed. This was a political concession that was done back, you know, in 2016 in order to get an urgency ordinance. It was not, I believe, ever supported by the Hayfork community, and I would ask you to please allow that to be removed from the carve-outs. And I would urge you to further consider the removal of all carve-outs as they do go against the general plan.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Jessica Johnson, Hayfork. I'm going to try and be in a better mood than earlier. I feel like I got some competition going on here. I have a lot of comments to make on this, and I'll be honest, three minutes is not even really enough time to cover some of the still there ideas I'm finding here. Just in referencing five B, there's two actual five V subsections. Only one of them deals with the water districts. Being a Hayfork resident, I just feel imperative to just go ahead and let the board know that generally speaking, the water district opt-out is not supported by the members of the community. And if, if anything I saw today, for some reason, we're giving a lot of credence to people's personal opinions and moral judgments on matters that are strictly land use. And I couldn't disagree more about putting the water district back in. And I go to, try and go to all the meetings, and I'll be honest, I haven't seen any opposition in a while. And we go around town, it's kind of depressing, I'll be honest. There's a depression going on, and it's only going to, it's only going to continue to negatively impact, impact the schools. Right now, the schools in Hayfork are a unmitigated disaster, if I can use a secret word. And the way it's being administered, I will refuse to ever send my children there. And I hate to say that, but man, it's a mess, and it's only going to get worse if there's less kids there. And this, the water district having jobs for parents in that district, I don't know what else to do. You can't just drive over the hill every day to Junction City or some other place that allows for cultivation or distances. We've got to have them in Hayfork Valley. So, this is a really big deal, and it's going to help our economic base in Hayfork. And having been to a lot of the meetings for just years now, I have to say that it was a very bitter pill to swallow, this opt-out being included the last second during the urgency ordinance meetings. I watched it, it didn't show up till after the break. And I could be wrong on the timing on that, but it was a move by a lame duck, politically-elected official. And I hate to say that, but I think it needs to, I want to be honest with you guys. And I'm trying not to be upset and angered. I'd like to be positive. I think the ordinance act that's been written is pretty good. You guys did a good job cleaning it up. So, with that, I would say go ahead and please vote this through a second time. We need this. Thank you.
Justin, real quick, the, the specific thing being talked about right now isn't putting the carve-out in, out, in again. The carve-out is out. We are now allowed to. At one time, I had petitioned the board and was granted thirty specific licenses for District Water Works District One. That's what we're talking about right now. Are you clear on that?
I am, and right now, I know that there are people who would like to enter the program.
Okay, I just want to make sure, because it sounded like you were, you're getting two different things. The people can cultivate now in the Water Works District. We voted on that. What we're looking at specifically right now is the thirty additional that were assigned only to that district, whether they remain in the district or whether they get put back in the bigger pot.
I apologize, I was outside for that, and I do apologize if I was unclear on any of that, and thank you.
So, very for against the thirty being specifically assigned to Water Works District One.
To be honest, I actually support Supervisor Barrow's idea of limited timeframe. I believe it was his suggestion to give those people a chance, and if not, then let's move on and let them be available for whole county.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, Tom Balak, W C. Let's see. First, specific to this item, and I think I agree that that thirty available new licenses should, at least for a reasonable time, and I think part of what complaints you've heard out of Hayfork is that the information didn't ever disseminate down to Hayfork in time. So, I don't know how we would make that available, but in as many ways as possible. It probably doesn't make sense to have, like, if there's four people, to have twenty-six other licenses stagnating down there. People don't want them, they should go back to where they might get used. But I do think it's, it's only appropriate to leave for a reasonable time those licenses available. And as it applies to public nuisance, and kept this in my back pocket for a long time, still there, but I know public nuisance has come up several times already today, and here we are on this issue again. And I invite the board, in particular County Council, to California Code of Civil Procedure thirty-four eighty-two, which has been part of the California Civil Code since eighteen seventy, whenever it was written, seventy-two, I think. Nothing that is done or maintained in accordance with a statute can be deemed a public nuisance. That did not apply to cannabis in 2016, did not apply to cannabis going past our personal grow ordinance. In 2018, what a statute says, you can grow commercial cannabis. If you are a licensed commercial cannabis grower, you are not committing a public nuisance. It's an affirmative defense. It's right in the Civil Code. You got a smart guy to check it out. Anyway, best of luck. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else?
To Lisa in Lewiston. I'm here today to represent the residents of the Lewiston opt-out area. We have at least two hundred-plus people who support this, and I want to address the transfer of licenses when property is sold within the opt-out area. The Planning Commission sought that to listen to the residents and recommended five to zero, that it be included, and the board has deemed it necessary to take it out. I'm just here today to urge you to add it back in. It's the residents in that area who want this, and, you know, I'm not against cannabis. It's the residents in that area who want this, and, you know, I'm not against cannabis, and everybody's going to say, oh, yes, you are, but I'm not. But there are other places in the county. There's nothing wrong with having residential areas where it's free of cannabis. I mean, there's lots of areas in the county that, that you can have your grows and everything, so. I'm just urging you to put back in the part that when the property sells, because there are, sorry, I'm nervous. I think in our Lewiston opt-out area, there's like ten properties, I think, that are legal because they were grandfathered in. So if those properties sell, the grandfather, the reason they were grandfathered in was because they had grows there, but when they sell, when they bought that property, that wasn't the intent, it was illegal at the time when they bought that property. So when it sells, we believe that it should revert back to the opt-out area was, what it was meant to be. Thank you. I wasn't, I wasn't very clear, I'm sorry.
You did.
Hey, Graves from Lewiston, I'm the opposition party today. So I am also.
Today.
Today. I'm not always in opposition.
I do every time.
That's okay. I set you up for it. I'm a straight man, bring it.
Thank you.
So I'm also in the Lewiston carve-out. I was never asked, I was never, was never brought to my attention, it was suddenly just brought up that I don't want it, and I was never asked. And I disagree, I'm a property rights person, if someone is adjoining property has a problem, and this is commercial cannabis, this isn't, correct? This is commercial cannabis. This isn't that you can't grow, this isn't cannabis won't exist, this is for commercial. If people purchased it, that becomes a part of licenses, that becomes a part of their property value, and it should continue to remain with it, if it does on other people's properties. It's, it's, if someone wants to grow next to me, I'm, go ahead, I have a cow, and not just at the board supervisor meetings, it's a borrowed cow and baby cow. So, and it smells, and it goes moo. And if people don't like that, I'm in an open-range area, I can, I can have, I can have a cow, I can have goats, I can this, I can that. It's not whether we like it or not, it's whether it follows the guidelines that the government has set for our use for our property, and, and in part, being a good neighbor. So it's not right to take one subset because Mr. Big or Mrs. Big lives there and make it a carve-out. It needs to be balanced for everybody. Thank you.
You spoke for.
No. We can't, we can't. You know how it works, I'm sorry, not trying to be.
If you don't want to, I will. So Carl, sit down.
He said it.
Okay, I would like to speak to the thirty. I agree with the statements that were made earlier that there should be a sunset clause. I do believe that this year, we're looking at a limited amount of people doing anything because of the ongoing litigation. So I would ask that for the board's consideration, that it would be a minimum of a twenty-four month, because this year is pretty much out to lunch, and that would give time for the litigation, and so we're looking at people wanting to come into the program, hopefully, next year, and that'll give them that full year, because I don't see people running to get a license this year.
If you're, I'd like to make a motion to approve as presented.
Sure, do you have any other?
I just, I just wanted to, so we had a discussion about the possible changes. We're moving into a sunset clause, and some of the other discussions that are being had, we're starting to get away from scripters' errors, which don't require the process to reset, and so.
Okay.
If we're going to move in that direction, we may have to send it back.
Okay, so listen, listen to a motion.
Wonderful question. So if we add, I hear you, if we add a sunset, some type of timeframe, that throws it off.
Well, so that would, that would change it right within the ordinance that wasn't presented to the public.
You're correct. Okay. See, there you go, listening to Groves, get.
I didn't say we do it this time, I said we could put in our next ordinance. Maybe, I thought.
So, correct me if I'm wrong, but to make a motion to pass this as presented, we'll leave the thirty licenses in there, correct?
As currently written.
Okay. Leave it like this, make a motion to accept as presented.
I'll second.
Correct, but thank you.
I'm going to do.
Subsequent?
As is, but the thirty licenses remain in Hayfork.
That's what he said.
No, he said leave it as is. As is is that they're taken out and just put countywide.
There's still.
No, it's taken out.
Is that why it's red?
Yeah, that's taken out.
Oh, okay.
So.
Okay, so.
We just, we just went.
Okay.
Yep.
Oh, I'll second the subsequent.
And then, oh wait, John, my turn. Then I would note that when we come back in the July, after the sequitur is that, that we put in twenty, or twenty-four, or at that time, we just pick the date, twenty-one, January first, twenty-one, that goes with sunset.
We'll tackle that later.
Thank you.
Yay. So I have a motion and a second to approve as is.
You have a, you have a subsequent.
I'm going to go with the subsequent then, to leave the thirty license in Hayfork to further notice. Right?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, so all in favor?
This is, this is.
I'm sorry, yep, you're right.
Supervisor Benwick?
Yes.
Supervisor Groves?
Aye.
Supervisor Chabbard?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Aye.
Supervisor Moore?
Yes.
Thank you for reading my mind.
We do, too.
Well, that's a first, then we can celebrate it.
Yeah. But, but, never mind.
Okay, the board will move into closed session, otherwise all the other items are complete. I have my own written list. Yeah, we'll take a five-minute break. Yep. Okay, the board is out of closed session, and information was given from Council Cole and direction given to the remainder items in heard in closed session.